Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I've forgotten the pen. Could I just welcome everybody to the meeting this evening? And we've got quite a lot of business to go through, so we'll start straight away with apologies.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. We've had apologies from councillors Ashby, Beecham, Donnelly, Pillix, Hindmarsh, Kemp, Lower, Hurry and Todd.
Okay. Any further apologies? No? Can we move on to the minutes of the meeting? Of the meeting held on 28th of June 2017? Do we agree these as a true record? Anything missing from the minutes? No? Official announcements? The first one, I would like to take the opportunity to remind members of a few training and briefing sessions which are organised. The first is a workshop on the future provision of bush shelters, which is taking place next Wednesday, 13th of September, between 5.30 and 7pm in a committee room. Could you please confirm your attendance with Member Services if you're coming along to this? That's the 13th of September, between 5.30 and 7. Secondly, members will also be shortly invited to attend a session with colleagues from the North East Local Nature Partnership on the natural environment and the role of elected members. This will be held in a committee room on Thursday, the 11th of October, between 3.30 and 5. An invitation will be coming out to all members. In addition, I know that the Chair of Standards Committee, Mark Scrimshaw, is here today to give his report. And he will mention some regional training to be held in October on social media for the elected members. Thank you. Correspondence. Did councillor agree to accept to receive the correspondence? Petitions. We have received three petitions. First of all, I call on councillor George Patterson to present a petition regarding parking outside the school at New Begin Hall.
With your permission, Lord Mayor, thank you. We are to sign petition, the City Council on Your Homes Newcastle, to create additional parking outside the school entrance at Yetham Place, New Begin Hall, in the interest of children's safety. And this received 183 signatures. Thank you.
I call on the Cabinet member, councillor Insley, to respond.
Thank you councillor Patterson for presenting this petition. This issue has been raised previously, an additional parking has been introduced in the area over the last few years. Residents actually rejected further parking spaces on the grass area as they wanted to keep green space for the children to play. The only other area is maintained by YHN, who have been made aware of the petition and are investigative in this issue, and they'll be in touch in due course.
Thank you councillor Insley. Does councillor agree to receive the petition? Secondly, councillor Stone will present a petition regarding Melbury Road.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. This petition is from the vast majority of residents in Melbury Road and surrounding streets. And I'll paraphrase the full petition, but it's essentially written, growing concern about the state of Melbury Road and overflow parking resulting from the extension of the residents' parking zone near to the Freedom Hospital down Jetham Park West, and that is displacing the property down to their area. So I'll submit, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. I call on the Cabinet member, councillor Insley, to respond.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And thank you councillor Stone for presenting the petition. Officers are aware of the parking issues in the area, and a full parking survey was carried out on Melbury Road and surrounding streets in September 2015. At that time, parking levels didn't meet the 85% occupancy rate required for the introduction of the permit scheme. But as it's now, two years since the survey took place, I will ask for another survey to be carried out in the near future. And officers will liaise with yourself and your work colleagues to take it to residents.
Thank you councillor Insley. Does councillor agree to receive the petition? Thank you. Finally, councillor Allen will present a petition regarding reports of plans for Park Avenue.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. They were humble beginnings, no different from many thousands of other Geordie kids. But my childhood on the Park Avenue estate in Gosforth was exceptional in my eyes. It was there that I learned how to kick a football, or rather, I was made to kick one. When I was old enough to step into the outside world, or rather, the patch of grass on the estate near my house, my football education took another step forward. In his autobiography, My Illustrated Career, Newcastle legend Alan Shearer describes the debt he owes to the open space in the middle of Park Avenue. We local residents are concerned at reports that plans are being considered to take away the open space we and our children enjoy in order to build bungalows. This flies in the face of Newcastle City Council's policies to encourage exercise, and so we call upon it to stop this happening, and Your Homes Newcastle to cease consideration of the use of green public open space on Grange as building land.
Thank you councillor Allen. I'll call on Cabinet member councillor Strathair to respond.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And thank you for the petition. Lord Mayor, I'd just like to say a few words in response to this, because I think this is an important issue that not only just affects parklands, but other areas too. Whenever there are proposals to build new homes on a green, the default position is usually for residents to oppose. Now, this is understandable. Green spaces, as the council has pointed out, are valued. They're valued as a pleasant view, a place for dog walking and for children's play. And I'm well aware of the health and wellbeing value of green spaces, and I'm pleased that the council soon will be setting out its proposals on its urban, on its green spaces for, in its urban plan for consultation. However, we do need to recognise that Newcastle has an increasingly aging population. The demographics are clear, that we not only need to provide for older people now, but for also for in the future. And we aspire to be a fair city and an age-friendly one. As you know, over the last few years, the council has worked proactively to expand and diversify the housing offer for older people in Newcastle. Our policy is that older people should be given opportunities to remain as independent for as long as they wish. And our approach is to provide a spectrum of housing options across many different neighbourhoods as possible, so that older people do not have to move across the city to find the housing need. We believe that affordable and accessible accommodation should be available to older people who need it, and in locations where they can take advantage of local support networks. The majority of housing for older people built in the last few years has developed on council-owned land such as this, because in this way, we can influence the design of the properties, how they are managed and how they are let. We regularly assess the land in council ownership for development, and if sites are considered suitable, they are added to the list of sites and set aside for housing development, known as the Housing Land and Asset Plan. Park Avenue is a small site in Parklands Ward, where the supply of level access affordable housing is very limited. The site was first considered as part of the Housing Land and Letting Asset Plan in September 16, for potential development of affordable rented bungalows to be built by Your Homes Newcastle, linked to a funding stream from the Homes and Communities Agency. Since then, we've moved that funding to other sites. However, we continue to review all potential sites on a six-monthly basis, and if Park Avenue site is again considered for development, it will be the subject of formal consultation through the statutory planning process, where local people will be able to put forward their views. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Does councillor agree to receive the petition? Thank you. Public question time. We have two requests from the public to address councillor and one to ask a question. Can we move on to the first public address? Can I invite Andrew Gray to the lectern to give his address and ask the question? Thank you.
Hello, Lord Mayor. Hello councillors. Thank you for allowing me to ask a question about the Newcastle Waste Commission. I was addressing this to councillor Nick Kemp, but I think I heard his name on the apologies. So I'm not sure who's looked on. So, right, okay, so apologies. I'll try to change the nick to Joyce. Joyce will know that New, well, may not know, that Newcastle Green Party wrote to Nick Kemp in March, welcoming the creation of the Waste Commission and asking for greater transparency. We have since then contributed to every public consultation event held, and we continue to send in our ideas. But my question today follows through on the need for greater transparency. We have repeatedly raised this issue with the staff servicing the commission. It meets in private. Agendas and minutes are not published. Meetings are held in London as often as in Newcastle, we believe, and we have still not been told whom it has gathered evidence from, let alone been able to scrutinise the evidence that it has heard. The City Council aims to be a co-operative council, and in case you've forgotten what that means, I'm going to quote a summary by some council leaders in 2013. They describe it as harnessing the energy of all the players involved. And they go on, "This works best when power is shared more equally between the provider and user of services. That principle of handing power to the people is core to progressive politics." Well, I agree. And if this matters for council services generally, it is even more important for waste and recycling services. This isn't a new insight. Here's what we wrote on the bike of a Newcastle Waste Group website 15 years ago. "As a community-led and open group, Ban Race welcomes participation from all interested members of the public in all our meetings and the select committee process. The gathering and sifting of expert evidence requires input from as many people as possible, and the final recommendations will depend on public support if they are to form the basis of a sustainable waste strategy for the city." That was back in 2002 or so. "The Waste Commission is independent from the council, but it was set up by the council, hence the way I phrase the question to you. Nobody in this chamber needs me to tell you that we have a problem with rubbish in Newcastle, and hopefully nobody needs persuading that we need to reduce our waste, to reuse more and to improve recycling rates. Probably you are all signed up to the principle that this needs public engagement, with all citizens playing their part, or, in Nick Kemp's words, 'a new approach that challenges each and every run of us to change our behaviour for the world today and the world tomorrow.'" So I hope the question's an easy one. When setting up the Newcastle Waste Commission, why has the council not required it to meet in public? To publish details of whom it has consulted locally and in London? To invite scrutiny of its evidence? And to ensure open and transparent evidence gathering, in which all Newcastle's residents can have confidence? Thank you.
I call on councillor McCarthy, Cabinet member, to respond to the address.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. And thank you to Mr Gray for raising that question at City Council this evening. Lord Mayor, just to remind colleagues that I'm replying on behalf of councillor Kemp, who is unable to be here this evening. The commission, as Mr Gray has said, is independent, so not part of the council's structures. So clearly, they don't have to abide by the way we make all information public, but that does not mean that we don't want to ensure that all of the information that they have access to isn't open to public scrutiny. Members of the commission were invited to be part of the commission because of their particular experience and expertise, and I think those of us who have been involved in this process are really delighted at the calibre of the people who have been involved in that. As colleagues will know, the Waste Commission was established in March, and from the outset, it's been open to contributions from residents, partners and other stakeholders. I must say, Lord Mayor, I think this is a new, exciting, innovative way of working. We've used independent commissions previously in this administration, and I think we have been open to contributions right from the start. The commission established a website which invited comments, ideas and detailed evidence from anyone who wanted to contribute to that, and indeed, all interested parties, including the Green Party, have made contributions to that. What, what will happen in the process over the next couple of months, I guess, is that that open call for evidence is still underway, and so all of that evidence will be pulled together. And over the next few months, the report will be, a draft report, actually, Lord Mayor, will be pulled together. And Mr Gray asked who'd been involved in that. Well, we opened it up to everyone and anyone who was interested, so, you know, it was about residents, it is about partners and anybody else who has a view on issues around waste. So we are really grateful to the members of the commission who have given their time freely to help us to develop a strategy around a really important area of work for the council. So we've held three significant rounds of stakeholder engagement sessions, and as Mr Gray says, he or his party were represented at that. And can I just reassure colleagues across the council chamber that the commission are intending to consult on their draft recommendations? So the, the report that will be produced will be in draft, and it will be, again, an opportunity for anyone who's interested to look at the evidence, which we will publish at that time. Clearly, it's not all collected together yet, so we do commit to publish all of the evidence that has been submitted. And I think, Lord Mayor, that ensures that everything that has gone on through the commission's work has been open to public scrutiny, and I hope that reassures Mr Gray of our commitment to being open and honest and transparent in all that we do. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Mr Gray, you now have an opportunity to respond.
Yes, I'd like to thank councillor McCarthy for that response. It's, it's helpful to hear that the evidence will be published and open to public scrutiny. That's essential, and obviously much, hopefully, a long enough time scale for people to scrutinise and potentially to suggest other sources of evidence. I quote Ban Race, and I'm sorry, I keep quoting Ban Race, to the commission, but there's a reason for that. We were possibly the first inquiry, this is pre-Hutton days, to put all our evidence online as we received it. And that matters, because we put it up before other experts were speaking to the commission. They could look at it, they could criticise it, they could counter it, they could suggest other people that we could address. And as the, as the Ban Race inquiry went on, that had quite a dramatic effect, that the members of the inquiry were able to sift and assess their evidence by opening it up as they went along, rather than just as a formal report and consultation process at the end. So I'd urge you to give as long as possible, so that there can be further evidence gathered, because until people see what is there, they won't feel that they've got the power and the trust and the confidence. And I make the point again, if we don't have public support for whatever's recommended, then it's not going to be where the paper is written on, because it's the public that ultimately support or don't support a waste strategy. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr Gray. Can I now invite Nikki Ramanandi to take the lectern, please, and give the next address?
Lord Mayor, councillors Nikki Ramanandi from Unison, addressing council on the issue of NJCP claim and the impact of public sector pay restraint, and aware that there's a motion on pay later in the agenda. For those working in public services have faced seven years of pay restraint, this has meant that pay has fallen 21% in real terms. Basics such as paying their rent or the mortgage, feeding their families and buying essentials has become a real struggle for our members. Those who work within local government are amongst some of the lowest paid within the public sector. Many of our members ensure key services are available, often 24 hours a day, seven days a week, yet the pay they receive does not reflect the work they do or the commitment they have. A recent survey by Unison showed that financial insecurity is the biggest concern for our members, and applications to our welfare fund have risen dramatically over the last few years. Members tell us of the difficulties they have just to run their households, with many going without just so they can feed others in their families. This is shocking in one of the most richest countries in the world. In addition, Newcastle has one of the most used food banks in the country, and for many members, rather than looking forward to the summer break, they told us how worried they were about how they would find the means to feed their children over the summer, children who, if at school, would receive their dinner. A decent pay rise is essential to try and begin to address the imbalance this has created, one that would allow people to live rather than just to exist. In addition, many working within local government do not even receive the living wage as set down by the Living Wage Foundation. We know that Newcastle City Council pay a Newcastle living wage and welcome the political commitment the council have made to working towards becoming a foundation living wage employer. We understand the very difficult financial position that the councils find themselves in, with funding cut year on year. Difficult decisions are being made about how resources are allocated, and so Unison welcomes the motion that calls on the government to fund the NJCP claim. It's crucial that trade unions work alongside politicians to raise the profile of the impact the pay restraint has had, and to lobby central government for money for better wages. It's acknowledged that low pay is bad for the region's economy, and the trickle-down of wealth cannot be felt within this region. Indeed, in terms of deprivation, some of our communities are amongst some of the poorest in the country, and as a region, we have some of the highest levels of child poverty and household debt. Within Unison, we believe that now is the time to act on pay. The government are at odds with each other regarding the pay restraint, and more and more of the public are of the view that those who work within public services deserve fair pay. Unison have launched a major campaign, Pay Up Now, and since last Wednesday, over 600 staff working within this council have signed our petition, which calls for the following: "An end to the pay cap; government money made available for an immediate pay rise for all public sector workers; and, 'an end to government interference in bargaining arrangements for all public sector pay.'" Our members have shown real enthusiasm for this campaign, as I believe it resonates with them. There is an online calculator that demonstrates just how much wages have fallen. Within Unison, we firmly believe that joint working with politicians is key. The Tories are determined to destroy the public sector, using austerity as the guise, the very idea of free, universal services an abhorrent idea to them. Working together, our voices much stronger. The pay restraint and the impact this has had can be felt in the communities our members live in and the communities that you all represent, generation upon generation earning less than their parents before them. Unison fully support the resolutions within the motion, and thank, thank you for the opportunity to address for the council.
I call on councillor Forbes, leader of council, to respond.
Lord Mayor, can I thank Nikki and her colleagues for coming and addressing council this evening? It was meeting with some of the lowest-paid staff in the council that convinced me some five or six years ago that we must become a living wage employer. Some of the stories of real hardship that I heard moved me frankly to tears. And so, again, we should be appalled and ashamed that we continue to hear stories of staff working for this organisation, staff really struggling to make ends meet. That is no civilised way for anybody to be in this modern 21st century Britain. It is absolutely time that the public say, public sector pay freeze was ended. We see marches on Parliament today about nurses' pay. But there's a danger that this is just seen about uniformed services and what you might say, the, the more recognisable parts of the public sector. We are not making that distinction. We are very clear that everybody deserves a pay rise. The pay restraint has gone on for too long. It's starting to have damaging consequences for individuals and for their families, and therefore for the security that they can feel in their jobs and the sense of satisfaction that they can get from their employment. So as a council tonight, we'll have the opportunity to debate this more widely under the notice of motion under my name. But for now, can I thank Nikki and her colleagues and say that we are absolutely 100% behind your campaign?
Thank you. Looking, you haven't, opportunity to respond?
I don't have a response, that's fine. Just thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. Right, we now move on to item seven, which is the presentation from the Chief Constable, Steve Ashman, and the Police and Crime Commissioner Vera Baird. We have 10 minutes allowed for this presentation, up to 15 minutes for questions and answers. We will take no more than six questions, which we will ask, we will answer at the end of the presentation. So invite Vera and Steve, I see Steve's already there. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, for this opportunity to address the city council. I'm going to talk about three things, if I may. I'm going to say a few words about general policing, and then I'm going to touch on terrorism and the current position that we find ourselves in here in Newcastle and indeed in the region. And then lastly, to be remiss of me, not to talk about Operation Sanctuary, and I'm sure some of you will be expecting that. First of all, in general policing, and I'll, I'll give you the abridged version, if I may, otherwise we'll be here till midnight if I tried to explain crime recording statistics and what they mean. I'm not altogether sure if I know what they mean, even though I've been looking at those things for about 30 years, they change, seem to change every year. The position here is similar to many other parts of the country, recorded crime is up. That in itself can be quite misleading. There are changes to the recording practices, which have meant that we now record crimes, we now record incidents as crimes this year that we didn't record as crimes last year. So you'll see a false inflation in that. There are other categories where you can point your finger out and say, actually, there's an increase in public confidence in that area. So for example, there's a 38% rise in sexual offences, as we'll touch on in Operation Sanctuary, there's probably a very good reason for that, and that is that more people are coming forward and have confidence to make, and are brave enough and have the courage to make those disclosures to us now than was the case in previous years. There are other traditional crime indicators which are fairly static and always will be. So things like burglary, we're actually seeing a 3% increase in burglary. Anti-social behaviour, down 12%. So it's a bit of a mixed bag. I think nationally, there are some signs, and we're not immune to that here in Newcastle and indeed in the Northumbria area, the North East. There are signs that there are crime trends that are rising, and that is a genuine rise. And statistically, that's quite difficult to distil. But if I gave you the, the bottom right-hand corner of the, of the sort of school report for crime, it would be there are some, there is some evidence that some areas of crime are starting to rise. And that's difficult. It's very difficult for us, because we still wrestle with austerity, despite what perhaps some of you may have said, may have seen in, in national media over the last six months in particular. We are still suffering from the effects of austerity. We still have cuts to make in Northumbria Police. We've lost close to 1,000 police officers, and more than that in police staff over the last five years. It's the largest reduction that any police force in England and Wales has had to endure of the 43 police forces that make up England and Wales. We have had, by some distance, the biggest cut. And I'm sure that's a familiar message in terms of other public services as well. Any pay rise that is awarded has to come from the same pot of money. That is a cut, and make no mistake about it. Whilst I, you know, I perhaps shouldn't say this, but I will, I would echo the calls for a rise for very, very hard-working public sector staff. The reality is, if there isn't more money coming with it, it will be a cut in services that will have to be the end result of that. One of the examples of that has been, we, it's not a decision that we've taken lightly, it's not something I want to do, but we have, we have looked at the opening hours of our front offices, and we've had to restrict those quite significantly, and Newcastle has not escaped that. And I know that that has caused some concerns. I can give you an undertaking that we are reviewing that on a constant basis. We're looking at the number of people who are still coming to stations outside the hours that they're closed. What I would point out, the stations have not closed. It is the front office that has closed. And actually, you have to take me out of word at this, very, very, very few people actually came to those police stations during the night, very, very few. And most of them, it was to access the custody suite because they were visiting either as a solicitor or a friend, somebody who was in detention. They can still do that. The, 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 the effect of this, had I not done it, the consequence would have been you'd have had fewer police officers working out of that police station. So it really is a choice between two, two wheels, if you like, and I think we've chosen the lesser of that. But I do undertake that we will, we will continue to monitor that. It's busy. It's a very busy period operation, and it has been the last year. We're seeing as we've shrunk as an organisation, it's difficult to cope with some of the events. If I give you this weekend by way of just a normal example, I know it's Great North Run weekend, but actually, there's pretty much something happening every weekend across the Northumbria force area. So we've got a protest in town on Saturday, we've got Great North Run events, obviously the Junior Run and the other events that take place, the Festival of Athletics on Saturday, we've got the Great North Run itself on Sunday, and we've got Sunderland playing, I think at Sheffield United on Saturday as well. That's a huge burden on, on my officers and staff who are feeling the strain. We've got a lot of officers having to have their rest days cancelled pretty much routinely, and that stores up a great deal of leave that they have to take at some point, and it's a lot of pressure we're under. I can stand here and say, you've got a, you've got a competent... I can stand here and say, you've got a competent, enabled, professional police force giving the best service that it can, but it is getting difficult. It is getting very, very, very tight. If the day had arrived where we didn't have a professional service, I would tell you that. That day has not come, but we are not far off it in terms of further cuts. It is very, very difficult to sustain the level of service that we're providing at the moment. I'll touch briefly on terrorism. A few months ago now, the national threat level went critical for a short space of time, and that meant that we had to project whatever we could onto the streets of the Northumbria Force area, and in particular in Newcastle, in terms of transport hubs and areas of high footfall, night-time economy, Eldon Square, et cetera, et cetera. What I would say is, we were overwhelmed with the public support that we received for that. We saw a huge increase in the number of armed officers that were visible, and that's not something that perhaps five, 10 years ago certainly, any of us would ever thought would have seen. I have to say that it says something about the culture and the spirit of people on Tyneside in particular, that they welcomed that with open arms, and we were inundated with messages of goodwill, people bringing bottles of water. It was a very hot weekend, it was a bank holiday weekend, if you recall, bringing food and drink to officers to sustain them during the long days that they spent out trying to reassure communities that we would do everything we can to protect them in these difficult times. Geography matters to us, we're very remote, but what I can say is, we've had a significant uplift in our armed officers, and we're in as strong a position as we possibly can be to give you that protection that we will give you, should the need hopefully never arise. And then I'll just touch on sanctuary if I can, and I just want to make a couple of points because I think everybody would have a view on that, on what's happened in recent weeks. And it's important, I think, that you hear it straight from me, what my view is. First and foremost, these are criminals. I care not what their background is, they're criminals, pure and simple. Whatever I can lock them up for and send them to prison for, I will do that. And that's exactly what we've done in Operation Sanctuary. You'll see with some of the sentences this week, that some of them are being sentenced for offences other than sexual abuse, they're being sentenced for drugs offences. If I can't get them for one thing, I'll get them for anything else within the law, and we will do that, and you have my commitment that that will not stop. Secondly, I think one thing that I've learned, I knew it already, but it reinforced it, our communities are very, very strong. They're a very, very resilient communities in the North East of England and in Newcastle in particular in this case. I think work needs to be done now to further the debate which has started about the causation of this and about how we prevent it going forward. We won't stop in arresting them and prosecuting them and sending them to prison. That will never stop. It will never, ever, ever stop. But it's not the only solution. We have to try and prevent this and get ahead of it, and I think there is a wider role for other people beyond policing, beyond the local authority. I think communities do have a role to play in this, and I am encouraged by some of the messages that we've received thus far. This is a total approach to the problem, and as I said at the start there, if we can't get them for one thing, we'll get them for something else. And when you look at some of those sentences being dished out this week, I think that's as clear a deterrent as we could possibly send to people who belong to whatever group it is that feel it is socially acceptable to have that attitude towards vulnerable women and girls. It's not, it never will be, and if you behave in that way, not only will you be caught, but you'll go to prison for a very, very long time. We've had exemplary support from Newcastle City Council, it's important that I say that to you all. It has been exemplary, from the top to the bottom, from the beginning right the way through the end. I'm not going to say the end because it hasn't finished yet. And whilst any praise, I think, should justly be reserved for those victims, for the courage that they have shown in coming forward and enduring a very difficult three, three and a half years now of a horrendous ordeal, to the point now where they're starting to see justice being served, I think it is right and proper that I say that. I'm very proud of the collective work that we've done with the local authority and the voluntary sector and a number of other agencies in reaching us to the position that we're at today. And I'm also very proud of the response of the communities that we are here to serve. Thank you very much.
Lord Mayor, thank you for the opportunity of joining Chief Constable Ashman here with you tonight. I'll be very quick because he's had a lot to say and quite rightly covered some territory for you. I want to say a quick word, general policing goes on as he's made clear through all the ups and downs of counter-terrorism and the more headline-grabbing affairs that beset our cities and trouble the police. We have, though, a very good operation in the town centre nightlife, and I want to tell you just a little bit about this for one reason that I'm going to talk about in a minute. You will understand that a huge recruiting sergeant for Newcastle as a place to visit, for Newcastle as a place of study, is the night-time economy, which is extremely vibrant. There is, Newcastle was the first council who very bravely took on a late-night levy, which has worked absolutely terrifically well. The people who trade in the night-time economy want that funding, or that part of it that comes to me as Police and Crime Commissioner, to be spent on extra officers, and there are extra officers in the night-time economy. Furthermore, there are taxi marshals on the streets and street marshals. The whole point is to surround this district within which people can have an excellent time with a barrier of safety, so that those who are vulnerable or who find themselves vulnerable in course of the night are protected and safeguarded, and those who would drift into fueling, drink-fuelled crime or antisocial behaviour are stopped before they set off. We have that excellent policing I've set out. We also have a large number of protective measures which work equally well. We have an excellent cohort, street pastors who re-recruited recently, who spend their time, some of them well into their 60s, patrolling the city and supporting anybody who falls foul of anything whatsoever. They go out in the night and they stay until four o'clock in the morning. They really are remarkable people. They want only for people to have a good time, they don't judge them, but they support them. They are able to take them to a safe haven, which I've had the privilege of funding now for a number of years. You may have noticed, if any of you are out of that hour, that it's moved down to the cathedral, and we've done our best to make sure that change of location's been properly marketed, because of course the big market's going to be altered, and so it needs to stay where it can be seen, right in the middle of the night-time economy. And it is very much used by people from someone who's just, who's lost their keys and doesn't know what to do, someone who's been lost by their friends, some people who are in quite a bad state because of drink, people who are frightened for all manner of reasons. There are police officers available, there are ambulance staff available, there is no social issue or criminal issue that can't be dealt with at the safe haven, and people do come in significant numbers there, and it is a great resource. We have, over the past three years, trained door staff, nexus workers, those who collect the refuge after-night time work to keep their eyes and their ears open for anything that might appear to threaten the peace of that community. And there is no better partnership working, in my view, than the way in which the citizens of Newcastle, the public servants of Newcastle, the council and the police all work together to ensure that that night-time economy remains an excellent place to go out and have a good time with the absolute minimum of disruption and of criminality. I'm making this point because the number of calls the chief constables talked about, crime statistics which go up really, or they go up because of the way they're reported, or perhaps they go up because people are more confident that they should report because they'll get a good response from the police. But here, it's very clear that the number of calls for service from that town centre environment on a night which might have involved a crime has reduced by 7%. That is a significant diminution in calls for trouble, as it were, to the police in that night-time economy. So it cheers me that we are there as a force to stop trouble from happening, but that actually all these protective and preventive measures are making their mark and making it safer in the first instance. I wanted to mention two very quickly, other bits of activity. We have recently funded, in partnership with the council, having an IDVA, an independent advisor located in the Accident and Emergency Department of the hospital. That is primarily so that people who come in there who suffer from domestic abuse have immediate help there and then in the hospital to get assistance. But a subsidiary role will be trying to set up a system which helps us to locate where violent criminality is taking place in the city. It's a thing called the Cardiff model, where people who come into a hospital who have been recently hurt, and that's why they are there, will clearly give their address, we don't pass that on, but the postcode helps us to locate where aspects of violence are occurring. Not now I'm talking about domestic abuse, but I'm talking about public violence. Those two things running side by side should be of great assistance to us. And we've recently got a smallish but significant package of money to tackle online stalking. And I have to say, although coming here, I talk geographically about Newcastle, you're all very well aware that crime has moved into new worlds now, and we must tackle online crime as strongly and as forcefully as the chief constable's made clear. We challenge it in the outside world. We are pleased to have got that, and we will be developing a project that should help to control that or give people the armoury they need to protect themselves and stop it from being of terrific impact upon them. And I'm talking about everything from stalking to online fraud to actual attacks on cyber institutions that are there to take them down. So my last two words, if I may, are about the front office closures. We will monitor what happens to those front offices, and we have monitored. This chief constable and this Police and Crime Commissioner would not take a step even under the pummeling pressure of austerity, which does never stop. We would never do anything that would endanger or put at risk the public, and we have kept open all of the police stations that we possibly can. There are, in fact, now, because of a policy of removing from the estate large, very heavy civic-type police stations and replacing them with leasehold properties right in the middle of where people want to see their police. We have actually increased the number of police bases that there are in Northumbria now, and these front offices are merely a closure of that convenience of having the front office there after two years of careful scrutiny by those people who work there to show that actually it was no emergencies that were coming in, it was people wanting to find their way, people bringing in lost property or people visiting, those who were in custody. The key points I want to make about that are that the police are still there, and if anybody, contrary to what has been the position over the last two years, while we've surveyed it needs emergency help, they are there and they will deliver that emergency help. And the final thing I would like to say about that is that the closure of those front offices, which I'd invite you to think is an inconvenience but no more, is thrust on us after the loss of more than £173 million removed from our budget over the past three years, and an extra loss this year of £2 million, with still more to come, despite what the government tell you about guaranteeing police funding. The clever way they put it belies the fact that it is going down and down and down and down and down. If we had not closed those front offices at a saving of £1.4 million, that would have been 30 police officers, it would have been removed from Northumbria Police, because that is the cost of 30 police officers, and you will agree that we've made the right choice there. My very final word. After 30 years of great public service and two years of being my chief constable, Chief Constable Ashman is retiring from the police, and he will leave us sometime around October and November. So I would like to take this opportunity here in this forum, where you've seen a good deal of him and got to know him very well, of paying him the compliment, of thinking that we all owe him a great deal for the quality of service and the diligence he's applied to the affairs of this city over the years when he's been here. And I thank him myself on behalf of the citizens.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Let's thank the Police and Crime Commissioner and the chief constable for the presentation, and especially thank the officers they represent for the work that they do to keep us safe each day across the city. That is much appreciated by all of us. A good example of this is an initiative called Problem Solving Activity. Members got an email on this at the start of last month. This sounds like a really good initiative funded from housing revenue and based around YHN State. It's very proactive, looking to prevent crime at source. However, looking at the areas covered by the staff assigned to this particular activity, sadly I know that East Gosforth isn't on the list and is not covered by the citywide scheme. Can I please therefore remind the Police and Crime Commissioner and the chief constable that some of my East Gosforth residents actually live in YHN property, and there are issues of antisocial behaviour in the vicinity, particularly around the Old Greg site, as you may know. Can the Police and Crime Commissioner therefore reassure me that this isn't another example of Gosforth residents paying for a citywide service that they aren't benefiting from, and that this service will actually cover the YHN residents who live in East Gosforth? Thank you.
We'll take all the questions and answer them at the end.
Well, I'm happy to answer that one, and then we can move on, certainly. I think you said, is this an example, another example of Gosforth residents paying for things and not getting them? Speaking as a Gosforth resident, I'm not aware that that is the situation. We've noted what you say, and we'll take it forward.
Thank you. Councillor Faulkner?
Please accept my thanks too for the presentations and all the work that the force does, and obviously difficult circumstances and happy retirement. I want to ask about hate crime, and I'd particularly note that Newcastle, the force was, the force area was in the top quartile for the spike in race hate crime post Brexit, and also that the force area is one of the ones that seems most to be targeted by far-right activity. I know we do a lot of good work on reporting, a lot of good work on victim support, but could you say something about proactive work engaging with communities, because I think that's important too? And secondly, could I ask about designing out crime? I had an incident in my ward where your designing out crime officer came and said the problem was entirely caused by layout and access, and I'm not really sure that we got the relationship right between your specialists and the planning people here, and could I ask you to look at that?
I'll ask the chief constable to deal with how his officers engage with the communities, because that seems to me to be fairly and squarely into his territory. The spike in reporting of hate crime is a real one, and you rightly, councillor, mention it, but I have to say that there had been immediately prior to that a very significant campaign intending to give people the confidence to report hate crime, and it had started to rise before Brexit occurred. And that campaign, which was a very good one, which is called Being You Is Not A Crime, Targeting You Is, is to some extent responsible for that spike, which was partly only confidence in reporting based on that. So I think that's an important point to make, so we don't run away with the idea that there is a worse spike post Brexit here than in other places. It's very difficult to separate off those two elements of it, and you should, I think, congratulate Northumbria Police for tackling the issue with that, and it's an ongoing campaign which will go forward. I know that there is a really good relationship between neighbourhood police and all of their communities, and the chief constable is probably better placed than me to talk specifically about those vulnerable communities likely to be targeted.
Yeah, I mean, I think one of the things I should emphasise is that we have a policy in Northumbria Police that recognises the fact that events overseas, not just at home, not just domestic incidents, but events overseas will have an impact here in terms of community tension. And if you go back and you look at, and I'm talking particularly around terrorism and various terrorist atrocities that are taking place principally in Europe, but not just Europe, it could be elsewhere in the world, you see a spike in hate crime. It probably doesn't come as a great surprise to many people. I'm not so sure every force does that, but what we do, as soon as there is something that happens internationally that we think may have an impact here, we kick in an automatic engagement strategy which links in with those communities that we feel are most likely to be affected. Now, bringing yourself that close to them is inevitably going to give them, hopefully, if it works, confidence that they can report to us anything that happens, any feeling that they have whatsoever. If we didn't do that, I think we'd probably only see the most serious examples of hate crime, and we would only be looking at the tip of the iceberg. We're not looking at the whole iceberg, but we're looking at a lot more of it, I think, than other forces are. I think that would be the issue I'd mention on that. On far-right, yeah, we do, we have more protests here, I think, than most other places. There's a number of reasons for that. One, I think we're a bit of a, dare I say, the regional capital, so if you're going to have a protest, you're going to have it in the regional capital because you're going to attract more publicity, and that's not just... And that's not just for far right, but that's for other protests as well, it's for the demonstrations, whatever it may be, tends to be in Newcastle and not elsewhere. It's not exclusive to Newcastle, we see them in Sunderland, and we've seen them up in Berwick and in South Shields as well in my time here, but principally in Newcastle. I think there's something about the way that we police them, we police protests very fairly, very professionally here, we have a track record of doing that. It's not for me to express a view one way or the other in relation to either side of a protest, the simple fact of the matter is, people have a democratic right to protest. We respect that, and we police it in accordance with the law. That doesn't mean that in exercising that right you can unfairly and unduly impinge upon a community, and that's why we restrict them as much as we can within the law to say you can protest, but you can protest in such a way that it doesn't directly impact upon communities and affect their way of life unnecessarily. And I think we've been quite successful with that. And then lastly, your point around designing out crime, I'll take that as feedback, and I will look at that, because it's a very important part, it has been for decades now in terms of policing, it's a big success story for police and local authorities to work together to design out crimes as an effective way of preventing in the future, so I do acknowledge what you've said. Thank you.
Counselor Higgins?
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor, and can I thank, you know, the chief constable and the police commissioner for coming along this evening, it's always very, very helpful. And on behalf of the residents of my ward of Benwell and Scotswood, first of all, if I can preface my question by expressing their appreciation of the work that goes on. I'm constantly pointing out the pressure on your resources, the cutbacks and things like that, but the standards that you maintain, particularly in community policing around Benwell and Scotswood, I think is always to a high standard, particularly in relation to work with young people, and I really do appreciate that. But my question is a specific and rather familiar one, because it's one that I've raised previously, and it's linked to the EDL march at the weekend that we've already mentioned, and I think the chief constable did mention about democratic rights, but of course democratic rights carry with them a certain democratic responsibility as well in terms of what people are saying and the way that people were behaving. So the first point I would like to make is, in the light of recent events in the city, was any consideration at all given to the banning of this march in the interests of maintaining public order? Because I do know that in other cities around the country, I think in Bradford, that has been the case, that the police and the local authority have exercised powers and said that it would be a real threat to public order, that there could be serious incidents on the day, and I think marches have been banned. Second point I wanted to make was the one, just on the point that the chief constable was making, about stretched resources and the cost of policing the demonstration. And I think that I did get some information in previous years, that the figure was in excess of a quarter of a million pounds, certainly a significant amount of money and amount of resources. And bearing in mind that I know that other organisations, and I refer back to a May Day march last year, when the people who organised that march said to me that they'd had some difficulties over policing the march because they hadn't been able to meet the cost. Now, I don't know if I got the story right on that, but it seems to me that the EDL are never expected to meet any cost of their demonstration, so I just wonder whether there's an issue around that as to whether there should be something from them. And the final point I wanted to make relates to a letter that appeared in a newspaper when we had a previous extreme right demonstration in the city. I don't know if it was the EDL, but it was around the monument, and a member of the public wrote a letter and said that a person in that demonstration was displaying a poster that said Hitler was right, that there were police officers around and no arrests were made. So if people are behaving in a way on the day that is clearly racially motivated, that is about racial hatred and things like that, would you be making any arrests on the day?
Okay. I'll deal with the costs one first. There are some rules laid down as to what we can, when we can charge and where we can't charge. I mean, the obvious one is football matches, and where you have events that are run for profit, it's a fairly obvious one, that we would say to the event organiser, if you're making money out of this and you want the police, who are paid for from the public purse, to come and help you, then you can put your hand in your pocket and you can pay. And we charge wherever we can to try and recoup that money into the public purse. If somebody comes to us and says, we wish to exercise our democratic right to protest, costs can come into it depending upon the scale and the size of it. So if you had 10,000 people wanting to walk through the centre of Newcastle, and we needed hatens to close roads and bits and pieces like that, we'd have to have very detailed discussions with the local authority about, well, who's going to pay for that? Is it the event organiser or not? And there is some discretion around that, but the sort of event that's going to take place on Saturday is not of that scale. And, you know, whatever, I won't, wrong for me to express any view either way, and I wouldn't do that, but whatever my view is, the simple fact of the matter is, people have a democratic right to protest. But what I said before is, well, actually what you said is absolutely right, you do have responsibilities as well as rights. The circumstances you described around somebody holding a banner, I can't comment on those individual circumstances. If something like that were to happen on Saturday, yes, if an offence is committed, you would expect a police officer to act, but they have to act with their discretion, and sometimes that's quite delicate in situations involving large crowds. If we were to arrest every person who breaches the law at a football match, you would have empty stadiums most Saturdays, and that's a fact, it really is. And the reason that we don't is because sometimes discretion is the better part, is the better decision on the day. That's not to say that something that is wholly inflammatory and unnecessary should not be intervened against, and, you know, my direction is that we have to tread that fine line about allowing them to exercise that right and also enforcing the law. If it's a minor breach of the law, then I expect officers to act with common sense. But if it's something which is clearly inflammatory and likely to provoke a further and a greater reaction, then I'd expect them to intervene and act decisively. So we do have a good record, a very good record, of policing protests very successfully here, and I'm confident Saturday will be no different. I'd rather we weren't doing it, frankly, I'd rather we weren't having the police protests as regularly as we do, but we have to, and it costs money. The figure that you gave is, it's a hell of a lot more than that. I wouldn't like to say exactly what it is, because I don't know off the top of my head, but in terms of annually, how much is spent policing protests, it's a lot more than a quarter of a million pounds. There was another point that you asked.
It was about May Day, but I can answer that, I think.
That was the example, wasn't it?
Yeah.
Well, actually, councillor Higgins...
It was just whether you'd given any consideration, discussions around...
Oh, to banning it, sorry, yes. Well, I think I can recall the instance you speak of in Bradford, very, very different set of circumstances. I mean, the legislation around banning is, it really is at the far extreme. I would have to, it would be the local authority, on advice from myself, that would have to think I'm right in saying that, somebody will correct me if I'm wrong, probably the Dave Vera stood on my right, but the local authority on advice from the chief constable would have to apply to the government, to the Home Secretary, to say, and my advice would have to be to the local authority, I can't police it. I can't safely police it. Now, in all conscience, I can't stand here and say I can't police that event on Saturday with a few hundred expected, you know, I'm not going to give you a threshold as to what I couldn't police, it would depend on the intelligence and what I thought the event was going to be like, but I'd have to be confident that I couldn't physically police it, not just with my own staff, but with staff I can call on and mutual aid from other forces as well. That would have to be one heck of a sized event for me to say I can't police that. If you look at derbies that we police, and how many people are involved in that, you know, I've put 1,300 police officers out for a derby football match, if I can do that for that, and I'm not putting anywhere near that on Saturday, it'd be a tiny fraction of that. So we're nowhere near that threshold, and I think sometimes people get carried away saying, why can't you ban it? It's not, it really isn't straightforward. Bradford was different, I think, due to their recent history at the time, they had real concerns that there would be, you know, they're more polarised communities than we have, and I touch on what I said before about having strong communities here, I couldn't, I couldn't evidence that we couldn't police it.
I just wanted to add one word, if I might, it's the Public Order Act 1986, and that is the critical measure, I think, of how much legislation acknowledges the right to free speech, that it is only if it's on such a scale that the police can't manage it, that it can be justifiable in the terms of disorder to ban it, and that, as the chief constable said, is not going to arise with something of the size that we have to tolerate. I remember the May Day point that you are making about a demonstration, indeed, there was a resolution about the costs of that demonstration to the regional TUC, and I went there to talk to the people, and actually there was a kind of cross purposes element to it. There isn't any kind of charging for stuff at that level, I can assure you of that, and I would have wanted that chap arrested.
Thank you. Counselor Stone?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Question for either or both of you, really, I think, on this one. On behalf of people in Heaton, could I raise the issue of the rise in burglaries in the Heaton area in the last year or so? What you're doing to address that? Could also raise a second issue, which may or may not be connected. There is a lot of reports about needles being found in various parts of the city, including the Heaton, the Biker and the Eastburn areas in particular, the Eastburn Valley, and I'm wondering if you felt there was an upsurge in heroin use and heroin-related crime as a result of that?
I couldn't say I've seen an upsurge in that citywide. I mean, drugs is a constant issue for us, but I can't honestly stand here and say that there's been a noticeable increase in the misuse of heroin in particular. So that would trouble me somewhat, and I would probably throw it back if I may, I'm not trying to avoid the issue, but I couldn't give you a local context to Heaton, but I'm happy to pick that up with you afterwards, but I wonder whether you've had those discussions with the local neighbourhood team around? Yeah, please do, because, you know, I think, you touched on before, we've seen a 3% rise in burglary. Burglary is a fairly resilient crime statistic in terms of, you usually get a fairly genuine picture of that, it doesn't really inflate with confidence in the police. If you burgled, you burgled, you reported to the police, so those statistics are fairly static, and as a citizen, there's a small rise at the moment, but that may well be disguising a more pronounced increase in your local area, which I'm happy to, if you send me the details, I might have that looked at particularly. Thank you.
Counselor Stokel Walker?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. When you get to my age, you don't have a lot of experience of the night time economy, nor of the policing of it, but what we do have experience of is local policing, the neighbourhood policing, and certainly my ward colleagues and Walker and myself would like you to pass on our gratitude to them, they do a superb job, we think the world of them, we have lots of interaction with them. I mentioned this to you, Vera, I think, on your very first visit here, and you did pass on that, but I'd be very grateful if you did pass on our gratitude and thanks, they're a fabulous team. Thank you.
Well, I'm happy to respond to that, and I ensure that it happens, and thank you very much for making that point and making it so firmly. Northumbria Police remains the police which has the highest regard from its public and the fewest complaints from the public too, and they are able to give people good friendly treatment, they're able to be firm when they need to be, but they do it all in incredibly public-facing and pleasant fashion, which makes me very proud of them.
Finally, last question, councillor Hurdott.
Thank you, it'll be a quick one, to Constable Ashman, Chief Constable, right.
I'll be called worse, I'll be called a lot worse, so don't worry.
I've read quite a lot lately about the increase in knife crime and bladed implements, particularly young people carrying knives, and I wondered if you could say something about what you think is the causation and the possible prevention of this, because it's quite worrying that young people are carrying knives around.
It is worrying, I would probably just try and counter it slightly with, there's a lot of experience in London at the moment of a really marked increase in knife crime and some very, very serious injuries, rises in stabbings and murders, et cetera. We haven't seen that. What we have, and I'll get into the area of stop and search slightly here, if I may, because there's a big debate around that nationally, around use or misuse of that as a technique, and we usually held up as an example of, excuse me, held up as an example of where we get it right in terms of stop and search, so we tend to focus that activity very, very specifically in the particular areas, and my officers have confidence to use the powers that are available to them. That's not the same in other parts of the country. So whilst, yes, there is a rise in that, I think it's what I touched on before, there are some categories of crime which we're seeing a rise, which actually, do you know what, it's probably a genuine rise, and that is a genuine rise, because it's not something that really would vary from one year to the next unless it was a genuine increase or decrease. What I'm confident about is that we're addressing it, that it's not going on to result in spikes in most serious violence. So whilst your overall offences of violence are up, the most serious elements of it in terms of stabbings are not, so we're not seeing that big increase in knife-related assaults. What you are seeing is more evidence of people being caught in possession of it. Now, that's an indication of proactivity on our part. So if we didn't do that, if we didn't stop and search people and find them carrying a knife, you wouldn't see that crime statistic, or you would see it further down the line when they went and used that knife. So yes, we are seizing more knives, yes, there's more proactive behaviour in relation to that, but I really don't feel that we are in the same league as some cities around the country. So it's not, I'm not complacent about it, it troubles me, in the same way that, you know, rises in burglary trouble me, because they are traditional, resistant-level crime categories, that if they go up, you need to take notice of them. Yes, it troubles me, but I'm not unduly concerned by what we're seeing at the moment, I'm confident we can address it. I hope that gives you some confidence.
Thank you very much. Can I just take this opportunity on behalf of the council and the citizens of Newcastle upon town and all our visitors to wish our chief constable a happy retirement, and thank you for all your work. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is item eight, which is the Standards Committee Annual Report. Mark?
Good evening, council, thank you for the invitation to speak to you, I'll try and keep it brief, I know you've got a huge agenda. You've got the annual report of the Standards Committee in front of you, I hope, and I'd just like to single out a few issues to speak about on what we've done this year. You see, number two is hosted a regional training session for members of Standards Committees. That regional training session was something we've been talking about at the regional chairs meetings for some time, and we decided to host one here. It was very good, it was held in here, and we had 49 attendees from 11 authorities at that session, which we thought was excellent, and we covered a whole range of activities, and I don't know whether there's another one planned, but I hope there is, because I think that kind of interplay between people on different Standards Committees across the region is very good, because we do operate differently. On 8.2, the CSPL's annual report, 8.2 and 8.3, I'd just like to take this opportunity to say that the contribution and work of our independent persons, I think, is excellent. I hope that John would agree, they've been a huge bonus for us, a huge help to him in assessing the seriousness of complaints, and I know from their feedback directly that they are very pleased with the role they play and are keen to carry on, so I'd just like to point that out. On, I suppose the biggest thing that's coming is the hearings, the processes. We only had three complaints against councillors last year, three complaints, that's down from 18, which we were very pleased about then. Now, there are some cynics who say that's because people have got no faith in the standards process, I don't, as I would expect you to say, I wouldn't expect that, I'll just say that for a moment. I actually think that it's a great credit to all of you that you're not annoying the public that much, I guess, and treating them with courtesy, and that's as it should be, and I think it's one of the things that we've seen grow through the ethical behaviour agenda. But we did have two hearings this year, which are the first ones we've had since the change in the regime in 2011, and they were, the first one was sensible, it went through and that happened, the second one, which is 14.1, the last paragraph, that has now taken place and has highlighted a couple of things. The first thing it's highlighted was the public appearance, appearance by members of the public, and the participation in the hearing by members of the public, which had to be handled quite carefully and was quite contentious, I think. The second result of that, the second issue arising from that is the question of sanctions. Now, you may or may not know that the sanctions open to us were decreased after... Now, you may or may not know that the sanctions open to us were decreased after the 2011 Localism Bill, and there's not an awful lot we can do beyond censure, especially if a member isn't a member of a political party. If a member is a member of one of the two parties, we can go to the whips, we can recommend things. If they're not, that's slightly different. So the main sanction available is either to issue a public censure to the member concerned or refer the matter to full council so that it can issue a public censure. At one of the hearings, a committee issued a censure and recommended that the member concerned apologise to the Lord Mayor for his conduct towards her. Now, I understand that hasn't happened, that apology hasn't happened. So what I will say is that at the next, I've said this to John Hex, I hope he's not too much of a shock for him, at the next meeting of Standards, I think we need to revisit that and see what we should do, but I'm fairly certain this is not the last you'll have heard of that. Because if people feel they can simply ignore the recommendations of Standards Committee, then, you know, the game's up, really. And so we'll have a look at that, but that issue has been really brought to light by this hearing. So that, I think, is a very, very major issue for us, that we will revisit and come back to. We've also been looking at the way the hearings work, the process, the time involved, all those issues because of these two hearings. And by and large, I think we're quite pleased with how they've been carried out, but as I say, it has given rise to a couple of issues. Pretty pleased with the registering of gifts and hospitality, it's gone up again, that's good, but I'd remind you all that we're very keen on this. And just to mention training. Training came up in a lot of people's comments about our work. I've already mentioned, no, I haven't already mentioned, I do a blog, I mentioned the regional training thing. There's also a session that North Tyneside are hosting, I think it's on October the 10th and 11th, which is specifically about social media. Now, that should be an interesting session for people who are not very familiar with social media, to get to know a bit more about how it's used, and those who are very familiar with it, to learn a bit more maybe about the rights and wrongs, if there is such a thing. But it's obviously going to become a much, much bigger issue as we move on. We're also very keen to have a look at the role of training in the code of conduct during induction of new councillors, and also some efforts to perhaps top up training for some of us who are a bit long in the tooth on the code of conduct and perhaps need a quick refresher on that. There's also a survey into our work which is going on, and that closes on September 22nd. We've had a pretty good response, but I'd urge all of you who've got something to say about us to please do that. There were a couple of members who said they couldn't access it online, who've been sent hard copies. If any of you can't access it and want a hard copy, John will provide one of those for you, but it's always really interesting to get feedback from people on how we're perceived. I think that's just about it, really. I would just like to take this opportunity to thank a few people. I'd first of all like to thank John and Linda, without whom, as they say, but it's absolutely true, and also Helen Wilson in John's office, who is an absolute brick, and when you read about these hearings, she's invariably the one who carries out all the investigations. I'd like to thank my new independent member, Wendy Lawson, who's at the back of the room, who's thrown herself in with her typical gusto. As I've mentioned before, our independent persons, George Clark, who some of you may remember as an auditor here, and Dawn Dunn, who are brilliant, they're really good sounding boards, and we're very, very fortunate when I hear of some of the problems other authorities have. We're very fortunate to have two such good and assiduous people. And finally, I'd like to thank the councillors who've been members of the committee. I think without your wisdom, commitment, feistiness, but always consensual behaviour, I think that makes the work of the committee, and I think it's a reason why ethical standards are now such a big part of this authority. So that's it, I commend the recommendation to you, the report to you, and I look forward to maybe seeing you again next year or being well. Thank you.
Questions. Councillor Shepherd.
Thank you very much, Mark, if I may, Lord Mayor. Thank you also for your work, we do appreciate it. I was intending to ask you to muse upon the question of sanctions and where we go from here. I'm pleased you've already discussed that. And I was also going to ask you apart to consider the hypothetical situation that a councillor chose to ignore entirely the recommendations of the Standards Committee and where we went from there as well, but indeed, you've already been there. So I hope very much, I look forward to the discussion we have in an upcoming Standards Committee meeting, when we can determine what and how standards can be enforced when a member chooses deliberately to ignore the wishes of council and committee. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Greenhave.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you, Mark, for your report and for all the hard work that you and all the independent members and fellow councillors on the committee do. Obviously, we've had a bit of an interesting year with two hearings, and hopefully that will be the end of them for quite a while. I just want to echo, I suppose, your points and the points that Bill made, particularly when it comes to sanctions, and for members, the sanctions are very limited to people who hold positions of authority on the council, whether in the cabinet or on the committee, et cetera, and we're very limited in the actions that we can do for those who don't. Obviously, we asked for a recommendation of an apology, and unfortunately, it appears the only apology we've received is for tonight's meeting rather than to the Lord Mayor. So all I can say is, I hope that we do look at this, because I do think it's very important that councillors follow the rules, and where they don't, that appropriate action can be taken. He wasn't asking a lot, we did deliberate as a committee about what action could be taken, and it was just an apology that was asked to the office of the Lord Mayor, not to any individual, but to the office of the Lord Mayor, and I share your frustration and that of fellow colleagues that that hasn't been forthcoming so far. But thank you for all the work you do, Mark.
Thank you. Is there anything further you want to say, Mark? No, there's no more questions.
No more questions? David?
Don't encourage him, please.
Jeremy's not here.
I would just like to say one thing, I mean, both Bill and Dan have talked about what do you do if somebody doesn't follow. I can assure you that I've thought about this a lot, because it's really troubled me, because up till, this is the first time that I've felt that the authority of the committee was just being flaunted. And I haven't felt that before, other councillors have had sanctions against them and have, I'm sure they don't like it, but have acknowledged them and got on with it, said sorry or whatever. I do think, and I'm just chucking this out, sort of putting it out on the porch, see if the cat digs it up, we think of these things very internally at the moment. So it's an internal censure, it's an apology from one councillor to the Lord Mayor or whatever. Perhaps we need to think a bit more externally, because if the public perception of what you do is altered a bit by a public censure through the press, perhaps that would have a bit more oomph. Now, we haven't talked about this, and John will probably tell me it's highly illegal and I'll end up in a clink, but I do think it's something worth thinking about. I would be prepared to write a letter to the press to say that. If a councillor is given opportunity after opportunity to take notice of the sanction and fails to do so, I don't see that there's any reason why his constituents shouldn't know that. That might bring them all down to storm the civic centre, of course, which we've seen from the last turnout, but I do think we need to start thinking a little bit more creatively. We're very limited in what we can do by law, and I wouldn't for a minute ask John to break the law or even try and get round it, because I do think that in the end, the idea that, you know, the electors choose who represents them is the basis of a representative democracy, and I wouldn't want to interfere with that. But we have to be able to do something if people are just so recalcitrant that they won't answer to us. So an interesting discussion that I'm sure you'll take full part in, Bill and Dan. Thank you, that's all.
Thank you, Mark. Does councillor agree to receive the report?
Agree.
Thank you, thank you, Mark.
Thank you, councillor, thank you, Lord Mayor.
Right, can we, we now have item nine, which is the scrutiny annual report, and I call on councillor Franks to move the report, and it is seconded by, do we know who's, is it Wendy? Yeah. And seconded by councillor Taylor. Councillor Franks.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Normally councillor Lower, as chair of scrutiny, would present this report, but as far as I'm doing it, in her absence. And as such, I fully endorse councillor Lower's comments in her introduction to the report, and add my thanks to all those who've contributed to the work of the three scrutiny committees over the year, councillors, members, officers and external contributors. I'm always struck when I see this report at just how much work has gone on, not just in the main overview and scrutiny committee and in the task and finish groups, but also in the health scrutiny and in the finance and budget scrutiny committees. And I thank in particular Karen Kristen for organising us and pulling it all together. Finally, can I urge all members, not just scrutiny members, if you possibly can, to attend the special meeting on the 21st of November, where we work out the scrutiny priorities for the year. It is important that we have input from right across the council and not just from, sorry, September, 21st of September, where it is important that whether you're on scrutiny or not, you are actually engaging in the scrutiny process and in working out what we should be doing. So once again, thank you very much to everybody concerned.
Thank you, councillor Franks. Councillor Taylor.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'd like to add my thanks to all those involved in scrutiny, and like Hilary, I'd like particularly give thanks to Karen Kristen, who does a huge amount of hard work, and is certainly pulling this report together in such a good way, is one of the least things she does, but she really is extremely helpful to us. The health scrutiny committee has had a number of fairly big issues to look at this year. Obviously, one of our main concerns is the STP and the huge funding gap that it shows us, but also there's integration of health and social care, there's the important review of mental health services and how that's progressing, there's the viability of GP services and pharmacy services across the city. We need to monitor the public health contribution to council priorities on issues such as air quality and leisure, as well as looking at issues closer to the council, such as the review of children's services and any lessons that can be learnt from Operation Sanctuary. I think the report gives excellent details about what's going on, what our ongoing concerns are, and I very much recommend this report to all councillors.
Thank you, councillor Falconer.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I've been discouraged from trying to go through the menu, but I did just want to say something about scrutiny, and that is, first of all, thank you for making the finance and budget group a legitimate group. I think it does demonstrate that it has a useful role to perform, but more importantly, just in the spirit of the comments from Hilary about all members of the council looking out for how they can get involved in the scrutiny process, can I just give everybody a heads-up for the fact that there's been a task and finish group that's been looking out the role of councillors and the kind of support that we need to do our jobs, particularly within the community, and that will come to scrutiny very soon, and I hope that all members of council might and should and will want to take an interest in that and perhaps give their backing to the recommendations that come forward.
Thank you. Councillor Franks, do you need to reply?
Well, just thank you very much. I think we all feel the same, that actually, everybody involved in scrutiny from both sides actually really try very hard to do a straight and honest job as critical friends.
Thank you. Does councillor agree to receive the report?
Agree.
Thank you. We now move on to item 10, which is a proposal to establish a joint health scrutiny committee, and I call on councillor Denham to move the report, and the report is seconded by councillor Powers.
Move the report, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Powers. Councillor Powers there? Yeah? Oh, he's asleep. Wake up.
Seconded.
Councillor Taylor.
Yeah, very briefly, Lord Mayor, I mean, as I've already said, the STP really is a huge issue for us. It has a lot of very good suggestions. The problem with it is that the funding assumptions are just ludicrous and will never be achieved. But it is extremely important that councils from across the region do get together to look at the proposals and to try and see what we can do to critically assess them and make sure that they do actually improve patient outcomes and are sustainable. Issues that just relate to Newcastle will still be dealt with by the Health Scrutiny Committee in Newcastle, but I think this joint committee is a very important step forward.
Thank you. Councillor Denham, you have the right to reply? No? Is the report agreed?
Agreed.
Agreed, lovely. Now, Safe Newcastle Plan, can I call on councillor Forbes to move the report, and it's seconded by councillor McCarthy.
Lord Mayor, unfortunately councillor Kemp, who is the chair of the Safe Newcastle Partnership, is unable to be here tonight, so I'll move the report. I know if members have any questions, we'll simply have to take a note of those and have councillor Kemp respond to them in the usual manner after the meeting.
Okay, thank you. Councillor McCarthy.
Second the report formally, Lord Mayor, thank you.
Okay. Any questions, anyone? Councillor Hurdart.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I just want to say that many of us found the SNAPs meetings of considerable value because we were able to share information about problem hotspots, antisocial behaviour, et cetera, and often get a heads-up on some of the local issues. And I wondered how Safe Newcastle feels now about their contribution, and has it been adequately addressed since the SNAPs meetings were dissolved? Because I think that's a great pity that we've lost those SNAP contacts.
Thank you, councillor Hurdart. That will be passed on to councillor Kemp. Councillor Kemp?
Yes, thank you, Lord Mayor. My question's similar to councillor Hurdart's and councillor Raymond's from before. I also find the loss of SNAPs meeting quite serious in terms of trying to deal with particularly low-level antisocial behaviour, minor crime and the drug-related problems that councillor Stone mentioned earlier as well. The plan doesn't mention how SNAPs or the successors will work, and as councillor Raymond said, we got this email at the start of August about SNAPs-type meetings being held in areas with YH estates and properties. It goes on to mention wards and then quarterly meetings, but it's not quite clear whether those quarterly meetings are purely in the wards listed or whether they apply to everybody. So I had hoped as tonight, and obviously with councillor Kemp not being here, we'll have to wait for an answer for some clarity on exactly how that process will work. Thank you.
Councillor Forbes to reply.
I'm sure those old comments that have been made will be passed on to councillor Kemp, who will be able to respond in due course after the meeting.
Thank you very much. Is the report agreed?
Agree.
Thank you. If we move on to item 12, which is the code of conduct for non-voting co-optees, bullying and harassment, can I call on councillor Denham to move the report and seconded by councillor Powers?
Move the report, Lord Mayor.
Awake this time? Thank you. Any questions? Councillor Denham, you've got the right to reply? No, fine. Is the report agreed?
Agreed.
Agreed, thank you. Right, questions by members. We have received two questions marked for oral reply, which, understanding Order 9A, are deemed to have been put. Councillor Ainsley to reply to the question from councillor Stone.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I think this is a timely question from councillor Stone, because as he well knows from his attendance at the Transport Forum on the 13th of July, senior deferral officials have indeed visited the city and the surrounding council areas. A further... A further, very positive meeting was held between DEFRA and council officers on Monday of this week. I note that councillor Stone refers to the guidance on the initial feasibility study. This was only received at the end of last week, and officers are currently working through the detail. An update on this matter would be provided to Cabinet at its meeting on the 18th of September. The timescales for developing the plan are extremely challenging, and we'll continue to engage with a range of stakeholders during the development of our initial plan, due to be submitted in March 2018 and again before the final plan is published in December 2018.
Thank you. Councillor Stone, you have a supplemental?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm grateful for the response. Does the cabinet member agree with the opposition that it was one of the biggest contributions we can make towards improving air quality in the city centre will be to promote the transition to electric buses? And will she agree that it's disappointing that Newcastle didn't get any funding for electric buses in the current bidding round announced recently by DFT, and will she join us in committing to a transition away from diesel buses in the city centre by 2025?
To Ainslie?
Yes, I mean, we are working with bus companies, and we have been successful in attracting funding during, I think, 2013, 14 and 15 to retrofit current buses. The bus companies are very keen to develop and work with us and, you know, improve the level of emissions that are coming from buses. I can't answer your question about electric buses, but I can get back to you about it. Thank you.
We've got two supplementals. Councillor Higgins?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Mine's a two-part supplemental that councillor Ainslie has partly answered, but first of all, can I just say that I'm delighted that councillor Stone is taking such a keen interest in the air quality of the city? However, does councillor Ainslie share my view that it is rather at odds with his past criticisms through the media of the Labour Council for taking enforcement action against car drivers using bus lanes, whose behaviour undermines our attempts to reduce the number of cars and car emissions in the city centre? And the second part of my supplemental relates to bus travel, which councillor Ainslie has partly answered, is perhaps she can just expand a little bit on what she's doing with bus companies to try and encourage them to improve and modernise their vehicles so that they have less dangerous emissions?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you, councillor Higgins. The answer to the first part of your question is yes, and in answer to the second part, as I've already stated, you know, we need to encourage the use of public transport, and that's key to improving air quality. And we're continuing to work in partnership with bus companies to use their cleaner vehicles, as I've already said. I mean, I think apart from working with the bus companies to improve the quality of the vehicles, we're also improving, increasing the number of bus lanes across the city, and in particular, creating a bus loop around the inner part of the city. This will improve journey times as well as reducing emissions. This will be integrated with smart traffic lights and all of that kind of thing. So by making the journeys, I think, more efficient and more, you know, timely and punctual and faster, that will attract more use of public transport, especially buses.
Thank you. Councillor Kane?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, on this one this time. A quick question for constellances. Obviously, the Central Motorway East is one of the hotspots for poor air quality flagged up by the recent analysis, and I was just really asking to check that the increasing number of residential properties for students being built along the side of the motorway is being taken into consideration during the plans, because obviously, that's a dynamic which seems to be continuing, meaning that there are more people to suffer poor air quality than there were previously. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you. Councillor Ainslie?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Yes, that will be taken into consideration, I think, before any planning permission is given. Obviously, the infrastructure right across the city is considered, and so, yes, it is considered, and it will be part of the improvement in air quality on Central Motorway East will be obviously one part of the study that's taking place now.
Thank you. We now move on to the second question by members. Councillor Casey to reply to the question from councillor Stone.
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thanks to councillor Stone for his question. Our aim as a city is to ensure that all of our children are safe and cared for. Where children cannot live with their parents, relatives and other connected persons, such as friends of the family, are always considered as potential carers, with the key consideration being the best interests of the child. As a result of this policy, about a third of our current foster carers are connected persons, in other words, family and close friends of the children for whom they care. Thank you.
Councillor Stone, supplemental?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you, councillor Casey. Will she join with me in commending the work of the charity Grandparents Plus, including grandparents in my ward of North Heaton, which is excellent work in supporting grandparents who step in to provide kinship care? Is she aware that many other local authorities are using their recommendations on kinship care to inform their approach, and will she undertake to meet with Grandparents Plus to identify how Newcastle can improve its policies on kinship care?
Thank you. Councillor Casey?
Yes, I'm happy to do that. Oh, thank you for that. Yes, I'm happy to do that, thank you.
Okay, no further questions. We move on to item 14, which is Deputy Leader of Council's Cabinet Report. Call on councillor McCarthy to introduce the report.
Thank you very much, Lord Mayor. I'm not sure where Linda is. Lord Mayor, I think I want to apologise because the minutes of the scrutiny meeting haven't been attached to the supplementary papers that have been circulated tonight, so we need to check that that gets done. One of the helpful ways of ensuring that we cover everything within our Cabinet report is to include that session that we have with scrutiny, and unfortunately, they've not been circulated, and I've no idea why. It's obviously just an error over the summer. Lord Mayor, I won't repeat things that were said in scrutiny, and thanks to members of scrutiny for their informed questions in relation to my portfolio report. I promised to give council an update on Broadacre House, which I'll come to in a second. The other issue, Lord Mayor, I wanted to cover was a number of questions that members of scrutiny asked me were about universal credit, so I think it would be appropriate if we set up a session, again, a repeat session, on universal credit to make sure that members across the council are informed about the impact that universal credit is having on citizens and the implication, I mean, in the wider context of welfare reform. So not just about what the council are trying to do to mitigate that and support residents, but to, you know, involve, as we have done in the past, people from Job Centre Plus Two. Lord Mayor, in relation to Broadacre House, and I know a number of colleagues have been in touch with me, asked me about what we are doing, it's very clear that Broadacre House, in a way, has nothing to do with the council, except a number of voluntary and community sector organisations have been in there on a sort of what's called a meanwhile basis. They understood that it was temporary, but of course, when you're in there, and those of us who've been to Broadacre House know how that really close working, because a number of voluntary organisations being based in the same place, has enabled collaborative, much more cooperative and collaborative, working. And so we are very keen to do what we can as a council to support finding solutions for that. It's not easy, it's not an easy situation to describe, nor are there easy answers, really. So although I can give you a little bit of an update on what we're doing and how we're trying to support the voluntary and community sector, and I will say, Lord Mayor, we are working with Newcastle CVS and officers of the council to try and find appropriate solutions. So we're trying to find short-term solutions for immediate need and longer-term solutions, because we understand that a number of voluntary organisations want to remain in the heart of the city in the future, and so we need to have that voice shared as well. Some of the organisation, Northern Creative Solutions, have secured some space for some of the organisations in Broadacre House to move to Commercial Union House. That might accommodate about half of the current users of Broadacre, but that is also another short-term solution. So whilst it might help some of the organisations in the short term, it will only be, it probably will only work for another 12 months. What Newcastle CVS and the council have done is put together a list of potential alternative properties in the city, and slightly wider as well, because obviously, Newcastle CVS now work in Gateshead, so some organisations might be able to relocate to Gateshead as well. Not everyone needs to be in the city centre. But we're looking at buildings that the council owns and buildings that are in other organisations' ownership as well. A number of my colleagues have offered solutions too. John Paul's offered opportunities that he's been discussing in the Time Theatre. Mick has been talking to organisations who are exploring Dorant House. So there are a number of conversations that are happening, all of which need to be explored, and a key one, and I know Flistery will be very keen for, Mia House is one of our representatives on the Mia House Trust, she'll be very keen for organisations to move into there too. So, Lord Mayor, I think all of those options are being explored. It's work in progress, and we're doing everything that we can to support that, and we'll continue to do that. We will have further conversations, those colleagues who are on the voluntary sector liaison group, in the next week or so. Thank you very much, Lord Mayor, and I'm very happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Questions? Councillor Faulkner?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you for the report, George. I'd like to touch on the issue that I raised with the chief constable, and that is raise hate crime. And just tell council, remind council, in July of last year, I brought a motion to council regretting the anti-immigration and racist tenor of much of the Leave campaign during the Brexit referendum, and suggesting and proposing that we brought together, in much the way that the leader of the council did on the Syrian refugee issue a year before, brought together people of goodwill and organisations in the city to discuss what we could do about it and what sort of practical actions we could put together to support communities and collaborate. Because much of the infrastructure that the city used to have, racial equality councils, City for Peace and so on, has gone by the board. Joyce amended the motion but accepted the main recommendation, so it all went through. Six months later, Joyce, I wrote to you to say, what has happened? I'd heard nothing, and you sent me an email back saying you didn't know, but you'd check up and get back to me, and you didn't. So really, I want to know, first of all, what is going to happen? Are we just forgetting about this? Secondly, I want to just say, and this is, you know, we're very worried about making comments about officers in council, but there's a lot of senior officers come along and attend these meetings, and I just wonder if it isn't part of their responsibility to actually pick up some of the things that come out of the meetings, particularly things where we are in agreement about how to move forward, and actually support members rather than rely on senior members to have to kind of pick it up themselves. And the second consequential point is something I raised with head of Democratic Services a while ago, and that is that we do have these, I haven't seen them for a while, but these six monthly reports on what happened to petitions. Why do we not have reports that come back and tell council what happened to the things that we agreed for action? Because we don't always hear about them, and some of them, like this one, just disappear down the tubes. I think it's disrespectful to the council, and it shouldn't happen.
Councillor Raymond?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thanks to councillor McCarthy for the report. I'm pleased to see some of the achievements of the council staff showcased in here. They do a great job, particularly the work with the National Autistic Society to provide the quiet zones in the libraries, particular highlight for me. Plus, I was also pleased to see the council rating the Stonewall Top 100 Employers and move forward with paying the foundation living wage. Given the successes reported in here, can I please ask councillor McCarthy why, in a poll survey carried out in the period the report covers, when given the statement, "I have confidence in our leadership to deliver against our visions and goals", only 48% of city council staff actually agreed with this? Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Holland?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thanks, councillor McCarthy, for your excellent report. It's really reassuring to know how much the council is doing to support people suffering from harsh welfare reforms at the moment. My question was about, you mentioned that the Ministerial Working Group on Homelessness had requested that the council pilot a project on homelessness. Could you give an update on that progress, please?
Councillor Taylor?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'd like to ask councillor McCarthy about the Wellbeing for Life Board. Obviously, there's been a change in focus since the peer review, which looks very welcome, and it seems to be a better way of working, so I just wonder if you could say something about what's been achieved with this new way of discussing the main issues and any new initiatives that have come forward as a result of this?
Councillor Stone?
Thanks, Lord Mayor. I'll leave aside one thing I spotted in the list of successes councillor McCarthy put in her report. I mean, I don't think the Metro's ever not been in public ownership, but that's by the by. I would like to ask her about the skills part of her report. Is councillor McCarthy aware of recent comments by the Centre for Cities think-tank in which they identify making more effective use of regional skills powers as a key driver of economic and employment growth? Does councillor McCarthy believe the council and the commanding authority are currently making effective use of regional skilled powers?
Thank you. Councillor Kane?
Thank you, Lord Mayor, and thank you for the report, councillor McCarthy. I was wondering if councillor McCarthy would agree with me that one of the great successes of the Students in Newcastle Forum, which she chairs this year, has been the successful implementation of the two Students' Unions' Clear-Out programmes, Leave Newcastle Happy and Hack for Good, which certainly had an initial, very positive reduction in the back lane dumping that I'm constantly banging on about in this chamber, but for good reason. However, that work was slightly undone by the actions of student landlords later in the summer, and I was also hoping that councillor McCarthy would commit to continuing the work in Students in Newcastle Forum on this, and seeing if there's cooperative and joined-up thinking we can bring to bear on the problem with the landlords as well.
Thank you. And finally, councillor Schofield?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I really welcome this report from the deputy leader and the evidence within it of so much work that's been undertaken to mitigate the consequences of the government's vicious welfare reforms and huge cuts to the council budget. Yesterday was the first day of term for many children, and on that day, especially when they're just starting, it's a time of mixed feelings of excitement, anxiety and a general sort of concern about how it will go. But today I spoke to a mother who told me that for her, it had been just pure misery. She knew her children, as she took them to school, were hungry and cold, but what was really dreadful for me to hear was her sense of shame and failure that she hadn't been able to provide them with adequate clothes and kit, which had been listed as essential by the school. She'd wanted to gather the children up and run home, but she knew the house was cold and damp, and there was no food. At least to school, she thought, they would be warm and get a meal. It was impossible to stand there and not feel white fury that she'd been put in the appalling situation by the cruelties and difference of the Tory government and their dreadful policies. But I'm really interested in the notion of the Active Inclusion Partnership. It seems to me a very exciting and possibly a very good new way of working to develop and address the plight of many families in this situation. I would really welcome councillor McCarthy to tell us how it works and how we as elected members can support it.
Thank you. Councillor McCarthy to reply?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I will pick up on those questions. In relation to councillor Faulkner's query about hate crime, the information that is contained on pages 98 and 99 of the council agenda tonight, which is about the Kindness Project, is exactly the first pilot of an event which is to address hate crime. So this is entirely being run by the Kindness Project, based in Broadacre House, and the Northumbria Conflict Resolution Network, with the support of with the support of council officers but not coordinated by them. So that is the first of those events. It was extremely successful. It was about listening to local stories. And I think it will be ruled out and members of council will have the opportunity to be involved in that subsequently and indeed invite members from the wider community if we think that is appropriate. I'm not going to comment really on, are we here to ask officers to pick up work? Because actually, we are responsible for making sure that things which are agreed here come back here and that we follow those up. And apologies for not letting you know about that. But we will, I will make sure that you know about the next rollout of that initiative. Councillor Ramon asks me about the Pulse Survey. In fact, there are three quick questions that we ask staff. In each of them, it depends on when you ask those questions as to the answers that you get. Because if we're running through budget process, members of staff clearly are much more concerned about their own futures. But I think in general, staff are responding really well. And what we have, what we will always do is listen to what staff are telling us and address the issues that staff raise. In fact, the work that HR are doing through the Managers Programme, and managers have a key responsibility in engaging frontline staff or all of the teams that they manage, to listen to that and reflect that back. We take those issues extremely seriously and I hope we respond really positively to them. Lord Mayor, councillor Holland asks me about the ministerial homelessness trailblazer, which I think is fantastic work, is a huge credit to the city. And a number of local authorities across the country are coming to hear about what we are doing here and how we are addressing the issues through our active inclusion approach. Councillor Holland wants to know what we are, you know, wants a general update on that. I'm happy subsequently, Lord Mayor, perhaps, to send some information around all council members rather than go through a whole raft of things here. But I think one of the key things that we've tried to do is work in a different way, bring together teams of people from different areas of work. So for instance, making sure YHM, the Department for Work and Pensions, alongside debt advisers, welfare rights officers are working together to do as much early intervention as possible to make sure that people don't end up in significant need. Because obviously, that's a greater cost to the whole system. And I will say the government are really, really excited about our approach because we are making a difference. We do not have the significant issues that other cities seem to have. And I think that partly addresses the question from councillor Schofield around, it's about the way that we are working collectively in partnership, where everyone is sharing information, trying to do their very best as soon as possible to prevent people ending up in a crisis, you know, in a personal crisis where they are in need of much greater support. So I think that early intervention work is really, really important. And Lord Mayor, it's also important that we work with other teams across the council who are working with families. So for instance, the Early Help team can be involved in this work because they are working differently with families and can use the information that they've got, be supported by the training that they've had opportunity to attend. And hopefully, we can get those messages out much more broadly. Councillor Taylor asks me about the Wellbeing for Life Board. What have we achieved? I don't think we've achieved anything yet because we've been implementing this probably for the last three meetings, I think, or four meetings. But we know that being focused on children, for instance, one of the key areas of work, and I know councillor Strether's really concerned about this, is around poverty for children. So that is, has been a key focus of one of our early meetings. And we are following up those issues later on. So we're addressing things by theme rather than, you know, in general, hearing about specific health problems. So it is about different ways of working. I think if I was asked to comment on the Wellbeing for Life Board more broadly, partners around the table all contribute to the discussion, but then go back into their own silos and it doesn't actually alter the way we're all working. We need to do much more of that joint working, I think. I think that's the issue really for the future. Councillor Stone asks me about the Centre for, I don't know about the study that he refers to, but are we making effective use of those opportunities? I think one of the things that we will try to do through our devolution proposals is precisely to address that because we know there is a skills deficit in this region and we need to address that. Councillor Kane asks me about Student in Newcastle Forum. The initiative that came from the, well, from Newcastle University initially, about Leave Newcastle Happy was fantastic, extending that across, obviously, the pilot that went on in Jesmond was really good. With the support of Christine Harriet's team across the city, that has stretched out and it has been really quite successful this year. I think councillor Kane will agree. And the more that we can do, you know, the better. And yes, we will try. And it's much harder, of course, as he knows, to do something about landlords. But working collectively is much, it's harder work. But actually, you achieve so much more in the longer term. I hope I've addressed everything, Lord Mayor, but if I haven't, then people can come back to me. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much councillor McCarthy. Does the council agree to receive the report? Appointments, the appointments are set out. Are they agreed? Oh, councillor Taylor.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Under Joint Health Groupie Committee, I know that the nomination doesn't seem to have got through from the Lib Dem group, but it is supposed to be myself, so I hope council would agree that.
Okay, that's fine. Council okay with that? Yep, thank you. Right. Item 16, notice of motion, police station closures. Councillor Forbes.
Lord Mayor, given that councillor Kemp is not here this evening, but more importantly, given that we had a number of assurances from the Chief Constable and the Police and Crime Commissioner earlier on about the nature of the closures and the reasons behind them, I would, I've consulted with colleagues over the last half hour or so and I'd like to withdraw this motion from the council agenda.
Okay, thank you very much. Is that fine? Okay, thank you. So we then move on to notice of motion, number 17, National Joint Council Pay. Councillor Forbes to move the motion, seconded by councillor Doane.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. And we heard earlier from Nikki Ramenandi on behalf of staff in this organisation about the challenges that they're facing when it comes to public sector pay. I'd like to share with council a number of the findings from a survey which was conducted just a few months ago with public sector workers across the UK, highlighting how the impact of pay restraint has left many of them struggling to get from one payday to the next. More than three quarters of the respondents to the survey, and there were nearly 8,000 in total, more than three quarters have cut back on their food shopping in the last year. More than half have borrowed money from family and friends. 16% have resorted to using debt advice services. 7% using payday loans. A quarter said they didn't know where they would go if they had an unexpected expense, such as their car or their boiler breaking down. And a fifth said that they would simply have to make do without. Four in 10 are not putting aside any savings. And more than a quarter regularly spend more than they earn. And the survey also revealed very worryingly that the number of people seeking help from food banks is on the increase. Lord Mayor, this is the result of seven years of pay freeze in the public sector. Public sector workers in this country have borne the brunt of austerity, have borne the brunt of cuts. And what limited pay increases there have been, the 1% that we've seen in recent years, has just not kept pace with inflation. Which is why wages now in the public sector are on average 21% lower in real terms since they were in 2010. And what we hear from many in government is praise for our public sector workers. But what we don't hear is a commitment to give them the pay rise that they deserve. Instead, what we have is a tactic from government to seek to divide the public sector into the good public sector workers, mainly those with uniforms, nurses, doctors, police, firefighters, and what some might refer to as the bureaucrats in the public sector, those who work in local government. We reject that division of public sector workers. We think that all public sector workers must have their pay reviewed. And we draw no distinction between which part of the public sector people work in, whether it's in the NHS, local government, fire, police or other essential services. These are public sector workers who've all been faced by a squeeze and therefore the response should apply to all. There's also been some talk in the last few days by the Chancellor about the potential for introducing regional pay bargaining. We think, and I think, that that would be a dreadful idea. That would be the most divisive thing that we would see. And for this region, it would likely to be lead to a depopulation of our public sector workers as people move around the country to find better paid jobs. Just at a time when what we are seeking to do here in this city, in this region, is provide good quality jobs that provide people the stability and security that they need in order to be, to have a stable family life and put down roots in a local community. That surely is not too much to ask for. Yet the Chancellor starts to talk about regional pay policy. And just today, in Prime Minister's Questions, our Prime Minister, who is supposed to have an understanding of these issues, referred dismissively to calls to end the pay cap as the Labour Party wanted to spend money on this, that and the other. Well, in our terms, this, that and the other are our nursery workers, our street sweepers, our library staff, our care workers, the people who do the difficult, unrecognized, often unsupported jobs in this city. We were the first council in this region to introduce a living wage for our staff. And as I said earlier, we did that partly because we were absolutely moved by the experiences of staff on low pay. And sadly, we hear again from our staff representatives, and it's evident in this survey that I was just referred to, that too many staff continue to face hardship. I was at a ward meeting yesterday evening and heard about the summer club that had run over the school holidays to provide children with hot meals. Many of us have seen and contributed to the work of the food bank in the West End. But these are sticking plasters, Lord Mayor. These are sticking plasters to a much more deep-seated problem, a much more deep-rooted problem. And that is the problem of low pay. Which is why we need the government to lift the pay cap and to fund a pay rise for public sector workers which at least matches inflation. That is a simple and clear ask. And I hope tonight that we can unite as a council to make it on behalf of our employees. Thank you.
Councillor Doane to second.
Lord Mayor, it's actually me to second.
Oh, sorry.
Second and reserve the right to speak.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you. We have an amendment. Call on councillor Stone to move the amendment.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. We note the motion's recognition of the impact of ongoing public pay restraint on public sector workers who are seeing their standard of living squeezed by the effect of inflation, which has been higher in 2017 than for some years previously. If I read the motion correctly, it is calling for a 5% pay rise for all council staff. I hope it's not churlish to point out that not many non-council workers in Newcastle will be on a 5% rise this year. We agree a public sector pay rise is needed and overdue, but we also acknowledge that to bring about a public sector pay rise will require additional funding for local governments and indeed for other parts of the public sector like the NHS. Our party's manifesto at the election recognised this and provided for an inflation-linked pay increase. The motion supports the achievement of the foundation living wage of £8.45 an hour as an appropriate step. But we also note the party opposition has identified a policy commitment to bring that level to £10 by 2020. Given this falls within the range of the council's medium-term budget planning, we feel it would be helpful for the administration to set out what this aspiration will mean for the council in terms of additional funding required. Perhaps councillor Forbes could respond to that point in the debates later on. The motion seeks specifically to stand up for council and school employees, which is right and proper. But we think the motion is missing a trick in failing to stand up for all Newcastle citizens who are similarly affected by pay restraint. And our amendment seeks to set out how we would do that. Our amendment draws particular attention to the situation of welfare recipients in Newcastle, including the very least, the least well-off in our city, who continues to be subject to benefits freeze and change to benefit rules. This side of the chamber believes we should be also speaking up for them tonight. They are hit by the same freeze, the impact on their cost of living is even more acute. We are proud to have set out a manifesto which made financial provision for lifting the benefits freeze. The IFS confirmed that Lib Dems' plans would have been the most progressive and the most generous to people on the lowest incomes. Labour's manifesto did not include a similar commitment to reverse most planned cuts to working age benefits. Although the party has subsequently hinted that it might look at that again, it has yet to come up with a firm commitment to help this least well-off group. I would hope that most of us in the chamber tonight would agree that if we should support efforts to improve public sector pay, providing of course the required funding is available, that we should similarly support the case for lifting the benefits freeze, given its effect on thousands of the least well-off residents of our city. We will support the original motion, but we hope the amendment will also be supported. And finally, a note on regional pay. This side of the chamber has often been berated throughout the record of the coalition. I hope the leader will have the courage to admit that this was one Conservative proposal that the Lib Dems deserved credit for blocking. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Faulkner to second.
Yes, second and reserve the right to speak.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Doane.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm perhaps being a bit simplistic here, but the motion is about national joint council pay. I'm proud that I was able to secure unanimous regional support at the North Eastern Provincial Council for the position set out in councillor Forbes's motion. And that position was communicated to the employer's side of the national joint council. Councillor Stone's amendment adds nothing to the motion. Many of the issues he raises are subject to different council policies and plans and individuals affected receive exemplary support from the council's financial inclusion team and many organisations in the council in the community and voluntary sector. I also note that the amendment carries no actions in the resolution section of the motion. So clearly, the group opposite has no ideas or suggestions to make. Thus, I would describe the amendment as pious at best and incompetent at worst. I urge council to reject the amendment and support councillor Forbes's motion and our employees. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Kilgawa.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Really, I just, I wasn't intending to speak tonight, but I think it's incumbent on us as the employer, it's incumbent on us as politicians who care deeply about our staff and their terms and conditions, that we recognise that our staff, some of our staff, staff who, under my portfolio, the likes of care staff, who, the work that they do, we can't put a price on. It's amazing. They are amazing. And it won't just be the staff who work in adult care, it's staff across the council. And I think to try and start making political points and point scoring, shame on you, Greg. You know, this is really important. This is about our staff and this is about public sector workers across the region and about us trying to do what's right for them as we should as local politicians. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Councillor Lambert.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Obviously, I wish to fully endorse the position that the leader of the council has taken regarding the plight of council workers that have been hard hit. But there's one aspect of this debate that hasn't been focused on because not all public sector workers are being subjected to austerity measures. I just want to draw your attention to a Sunday Times expose last week about these academy chains that have sprouted up and have to say, somewhat accelerated under the last coalition government on which the Liberal Democrats played a major role. And what you will find is that there seems to be one rule from one. And what you will find is that there seems to be one rule for one and another rule for others. Let me give you some examples here before I start to localize the examples I'm going to give you. Seven chief executives of academy trusts, one of which is in this city, I will not name his name because he will sue me, earns, but it's all true, earns between £200,000 to £300,000, okay? One, basically, so hard done to that the governors basically gave him a BMW so that his car journey from the schools to the community would be safe and comfortable. Now, it doesn't just, quite frankly, these people earn more than the Prime Minister of this country. Now, whatever you think of the Prime Minister, it's one hell of a job. You tell me managing 3,000 people justifies £200k a year plus a BMW? They're taking the pay, quite frankly. And it doesn't just stop at academy bosses as well. You've got these health trust bosses as well, £260k a year with all the private health insurance. Why do you need private health insurance in Newcastle when you've got the best hospitals outside London? That's the second point. And the third point, let's not forget the vice chancellor's pay. You know, 9,000 student fees deterring a lot of disadvantaged students. These vice chancellors, they think they're worth the market rate for doing what? £200,000, £400,000 a year at the same time, basically that you're imposing £9,000 a year fees on undergraduates? And it gets worse. I've been doing some digging because I'm getting a little investigative these days. And I've got a mate of mine who used to work at Doncaster College, you might have heard of it actually, it was called Donnygate, right? And this is called the Doncaster College City. Well, the bloke who ran that, basically, he thought he was doing nothing wrong. It's unbelievable. I've been in touch with this woman called Deborah Wayne, she's a journalist, a very good one as well, and she pulled the plug on this, I'll tell you, right? And this guy, they were having trips abroad, and this governing body, this guy was on £300k. What am I doing wrong? What are you doing wrong? You're a greedy bastard, that's what you're doing wrong! And not only this, the same bloke, once he was exposed in private eye, these guys don't disappear, this guy's now the Vice Chancellor of Bolton University, driving a Bentley. I'll tell you this much, I'm not being funny, I'm not a Corbynite by definition, but I'll tell you one thing he's right about, the yawning chasm between the rich and the poor in our community and this society has got to stop. Thank you, and that's all I'm going to say.
As we have no more speakers, well, exactly. Can I ask councillor Falconer to, sorry, I was just stumbling there a bit, I'm overwhelmed.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Thank you, Stephen, for making the point of how you stick to the motion. And I agree entirely with everything you said. And I know how passionate Karen is about the issue of our desperately low paid care workers and many other low paid staff we have. Members share that on both sides, that view and concern. And we've all heard stories of workers having to access food banks, and it's pretty desperate in this day and age. However, please don't misrepresent the nature of the amendment. Have a read of it, Veronica, take your blinkers off. The amendment still says this council supports the NGSC pay claim for 2018. It still has the three resolutions at the back of it. What it's done is to add some other stuff. And what is the purpose of us having these debates if we can't come along and raise some additional points that you are put forward in your motion? You do it often enough to motions that we bring forward. So we're making points about benefits and we think you should support that as well. We're not saying you're against what councillor Stone has mentioned, but why don't you want to listen to the argument? And if you want to know some extra stuff, councillor Stone has already told you, raising public sector pay, raising pay was by at least the rate of inflation, was in the Lib Dem manifesto at the most recent general election. So we're on your side, you're the ones who are trying to manufacture dissent here, so please be a little fairer when you look at these things. And let me remind you, because it is true, you have to look back a little bit, that the first three years after the crash, it was private sector workers who took the hit. Public sector workers had the benefit of the three year previously agreed pay claims, and it was only in 2010/11 that the 1% came in. And private sector workers were, many of them in desperately poor straits, because many of them were given the opportunity of taking something like a 10% pay cut or losing their jobs. Well, at least that didn't happen particularly in the second, and certainly didn't happen in this local authority. So please, why not be prepared to listen to something that's about low pay generally? That's what your motion should be about. We supported the tenet of the motion, but low pay generally. And you make a point about Brexit, you miss the point about Brexit, not just about rising inflation, it's about what's going to happen if we end up in a completely deregulated low wage economy, that's going to happen to all of us. And partly it's the fault of your party and your party leader sitting on your hands in the Brexit debate. You're the ones who helped lose the referendum, and you should be willing to accept that. So these are bigger, bigger issues than just this motion. We support the motion, but look beyond it, look at these other issues about the nature of employment these days, the nature of pay in all sectors. Take your blinkers off.
councillor Avery, do you wish to exercise your right of reply? Sorry, you have to second the motion and speak.
So this motion hasn't, the debate has not quite panned out as I was expecting it. I think it's, it's slightly disappointing that something that we all began agreeing on has broken down. I'd like to return to the spirit of the original motion, because I don't think this will have been a very edifying experience for any Unison members who are watching. Because what really is incredibly important, and I absolutely agree that benefit recipients are in terrible situations, lots of other people in our city are in terrible situations, but it in no way diminishes the suffering of others to acknowledge the particular situation this motion addresses. And while I don't think it raises to the standard of something that I would need to declare as an interest, my mother is very well cared for by care workers and by social workers, and I'm tremendously personally grateful for the work that they do, and they do for many others in her situation. And I think it is beyond appalling that those social workers who are there whenever she needs something and provide an incredible degree of service have seen their real pay go down, that their pay is worth less now than it was five years ago and than it was seven years ago. I think that's simply appalling. And I think we need to recognize, particularly after recent events, that this is also true of one of the greatest unsung heroes of our society, which are social workers, that they not only look after people with disabilities, but they also are doing incredibly important preventative work for children and vulnerable adults and for people who might be at risk. I was fortunate enough, along with colleagues, to sit through a training session for social workers during Operation Sanctuary. And during it, one of the things that was discussed was the need for social workers to take time off and to essentially get PTSD, post traumatic stress disorder counselling because of the terrible nature of the work that they were having to deal with. I think that work is incredibly important, and the fact that those people who are traumatizing themselves in order to try and resolve the trauma of others, that those people are being paid less now than they were before, is simply unacceptable, and I strongly commend this motion to council. Thank you.
Thank you. Now call on councillor Forbes to reply.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. We are all accustomed from time to time in our ward meetings to having angry old men who come and sit and rant at the back, often talking rubbish. Sadly, they seem to have spread into the, sadly, they seem to have spread into the council chamber this evening. And we will take no lessons from the party opposite when it comes to challenging and tackling low pay. And I'll say something more about this in just a moment. On the motion itself, the motion is clearly talking about the national joint pay negotiating bodies and the position that this council should take in regard of a policy position around those. We all have huge sympathy, and in fact, we have spoken up time after time after time, again, in this council chamber, about the dire impact of welfare reform and poverty upon people in this city. Look at the things that councillor Stone refers to in this amendment, that he asks, that he refers to. Calling for an inflation linked pay rise for all public sector workers. Which party colluded with the Tories to freeze it in the first place? Lifting the freeze on benefit levels. Which party colluded to freeze them in the first place? Reversing recent cuts to the family element of child tax credit levels. Which party colluded with the Tories to reduce them in the first place? Scrapping the two child payment limit. Well, I suppose that is something that the Tories have thought of since the coalition, but their cuts to universal credit were done in collusion between the Liberal Democrats and the Tories. The cuts to ESA were done by the Liberal Democrats and the Tories. And the housing benefit cut for 18 to 21 year olds was done by the Liberal Democrats and the Tories. So we will take no lessons from those people on that side of the chamber for the damage that they did to our communities and the poverty that they have increased in this city during their time in government. So there is no reason why the content of that shouldn't come back in a separate motion. And perhaps councillor Stone and I can do a joint motion where he will apologize to his party's actions. But for this motion tonight, our focus is on the government's approach to the forthcoming pay negotiations. And we are absolutely clear, we know that 1% increase in pay costs this council £2 million. Therefore, we cannot simply have a situation where we call for a pay rise and not have it funded. That would lead to further job losses, further service cuts. By the way, I just need to remind councillor Falcone, he talked about people in the pay sector having to take a pay cut or face losing their jobs. People in the public sector have had a pay freeze, a long term pay reduction, and 2,500 of them in this council have lost their jobs. That is not fair, and we have fought that every step of the way along the line. So, Lord Mayor, Lord Mayor, we know that we need to call on this pay cap to be lifted. That is a universal clamour, not just from our party, but more broadly. We hear it from everybody, we heard it from the chief constable this evening, and we hear it from many people across the political spectrum. But we also know that that must be funded by central government. It is a crucial decision that they have to make in the forthcoming budget and autumn statement. They have to change their view on austerity, they have to lift the cap for pay nationally, and they have to fund the pay settlements nationally, because otherwise the consequences for us would be catastrophic. And if anybody asks where the money will come from, let's just remind this government that they were able to find £1.5 billion for Northern Ireland in order to stay in office. If they can find £1.5 billion for the Northern Ireland, they can find a couple of tens of million so that our staff can have a decent pay rise. So, Lord Mayor, I reject the amendment, not because of its content, but because of the dilutary effect it has on the focus of this motion, and because of the disgraceful way in which the opposition have behaved tonight. I would urge my colleagues to support the original motion to make sure that we as a council come together to make a clear submission to the pay negotiating bodies that it's time to scrap the cap and give our staff the pay rise they deserve.
Thank you, everyone. Can we now go to a vote on the amendment? A named vote, please, can we ring the duda? Sorry, before we do the named vote, can I make sure you're sitting in your right seat? Is everybody sitting, because we don't think councillor Tinian's in his right seat. Well done. Voting for the amendment? I think there's a bit of confusion, can we take that vote again, please? We're nearly at the end, so, you know, let's try a bit harder. We're voting on the amendment, people. I think that's the amendment failed. Can we now vote on the substantive?
It's agreed.
It's agreed? Okay. That, thank you. We now move on to a notice of motion, Transport Investment, number 18. Can I call on councillor Huddard to move? Seconded by?
councillor Stone.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I actually prepared this motion because I was concerned about the growing disparity in funding policy between, for transport infrastructure, between the north of England and the south eastern London. I think councillor Forbes might call me an angry old woman, well, I am, and I am furious about this. We all understand the importance of cross rail, which will provide transport across Greater London. And we understand it's a brilliant feat of engineering, I watch the films as well. It's got 73 miles of track, 40 new stations plus upgrades, and it's cost £15 billion and taken seven years to complete. And we can understand the way it will reduce travel times, emissions, congestion, et cetera. But we want some of this too, we deserve it as well. Why should it always be in London? And there's a couple of issues recently that have left me open mouth, well, you could say gobsmacked, at the statements that without cross rail to, another one, to link, going the other way, north to south, to link Surrey to Hertfordshire, and it's going to provide 200,000 new jobs and 200,000 homes, as well as improved communication, et cetera, that without it, London's going to sink. Well, I think it's total nonsense. And Chris Grayling, the Transport Secretary, has given his agreement to this project at a mere £31 billion, chicken feed! And to top it, last week, the same Transport Minister has agreed £150 million for an extension to the West Midlands Metro to five ways. Now, it's also a very worthy project, I used to drive through there every day, it's a really busy congested area, but we deserve better as well. And this came with Tory largesse, just after he had announced the electrification of the Transpennine Route, which would link a load of northern cities, has been postponed. How on earth can he justify this? And what makes us less worthy of these aforementioned investments? The northern powerhouse, which represents a lot of businesses, et cetera, has been correct to highlight the disgraceful treatment of the north compared with the investment in the south eastern western counties and London. IPPR North has published figures to show that had the north received the same amount of transport spending, we would have received £59 billion over the last decade. And the IPPR petition, I think, has had its 80,000 signatures. And to quote Andy Burnham of Greater Manchester, "The electrification of the line across the north is critical to the government's promise of a northern powerhouse. The north has suffered from a lack of investment for too long, compared with the rest of the country, and has had to put up with second class transport for too long." Well, it is, he's right, I agree with him, it's a damn disgrace. And we're asking that this council, along with its business and academic partners, will actively support activities to improve transport within and across the north. And I am fed up being told it's jammed tomorrow and you'll get an HS3 sometime. I don't think I will live long enough to see any of this. And whatever influence you folks can bring on other Labour politicians, I don't blame Sadiq Khan in London for sticking up for his people and saying he wants another cross rail. That's, you know, that's fine. What are the Labour politicians in the north east of England? There's 20 odd MPs, why aren't they out on the streets shouting? Why aren't they in here shouting as well? You know? It is discrimination, and it is disgraceful that we should be the children of a lesser god. I am furious about this, and I hope you will get your, we will get your support. And my colleagues, councillor Stone, will add some more to this. Thank you. Thank you.
Councillor Stone?
Seconded, deserves a right to speak, Lord Mayor.
That's fine. Do I need to do the? Yeah. Right, second the motion. Sorry, the amendment is councillor Forbes?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. This is meant to be a friendly amendment. I do hope it's seen by that. The purpose behind the amendment is simply to tidy up the original motion and bring it a little more in line with what's actually happening, where there were perhaps a number of, not exactly inaccuracies, but perhaps slightly misphrased comments in the original. There's no doubt about it, very clear from the evidence from IPPR North, as councillor Haddad referred to, that we are at a disadvantage when it comes to transport investment. About £1,800 per head planned for investment in London in the next five years, £222, less than a fifth, planned in the north-east. And yet, we know that we have some pressing, urgent investment needs. Everybody knows about the case that we are making for the reinvigoration of the metro. And there's very clear evidence that the age of the metro trains is starting to cause real problems in terms of the reliability and efficiency of the service. Everybody is convinced of the need. And today, we see in our local media that businesses have also joined the cause for the government to fund new metro trains. So one of our arguments for investment in this region is the investment package that we need for new metro carriages. But we've also been working with other authorities. Transport for the North came out of work that Newcastle did along with the other four core cities in the northern corridor, Manchester, Leeds, Sheffield and Liverpool. And we created a transport body, which was initially a lobbying body, but which is now becoming a statutory body. And the aim of that was to start to change the nature of the conversation that North collectively has with government. So instead of each of us having to go through a national bidding process using national criteria that are set out by central government, each competing with each other, what Transport for the North does is provide an umbrella organisation for us to have a collective and collaborative conversation about how we want to see investment over a longer period of time. And not just investment in rail, by the way, investment in highways too, and also our ports, because having a whole joined-up transport conversation is really important. So Transport for the North is the key vehicle for making sure that we continue to have this important, single-voice conversation with government. And moving from being an advisory body to being on a statutory footing means that the government has to formally consult with it when it comes to plans. But the deep-seated problem is not just the lack of a joined-up voice from across the North, which is one of the things that we're trying to fix. It's the assumption in many parts of central government that investment around transport infrastructure has to match growth. And what we're trying to do is come up with a broader set of metrics that demonstrate added value. Because if you turn it around, actually, the disparity in funding between the north-east and London shows that the north-east is actually the most efficient and effective place to invest in order to grow the UK's economy. And I think that's a very compelling argument with central government at the moment around closing the productivity gap across the UK. So this amendment, Lord Mayor, I hope will be considered as a friendly amendment by the mover and seconder tonight. And hopefully, we can join together to make a clear voice from Newcastle as part of a wider voice for the North about the need for Transport for the North to have greater powers and responsibilities, and most specifically, for the government to give us the metro carriages that we need for the system to be effective and efficient.
Can I call on councillor, sorry, Inceley to second? Sorry, I had any glasses on. Right, can I just inform councillor that the guillotine has now fallen? We will continue with this debate. And once the debate's finished, then we will discuss the rest of the items on the agenda. Thank you. Do we not have the debate? Yeah. Councillor Avery, you wish to speak? And then we'll go to the vote.
So I'll be brief in recognition of the time we're at. So I entirely agreed with the things that councillor Haddad said, except for one specific thing that I would like to come back on, which is that she, for some reason, believes that our members of parliament should be in this chamber this evening discussing this issue. While it is an incredibly important issue, I think the job that members of parliament do is also quite important. And I think it's important that they, for example, have been in London for Prime Minister's Questions, holding the interests of the city in the public eye and holding the government to account. And I'd note that not only have our three MPs in the city been outspoken on this, but that it is, I would say, somewhat bizarre to, for example, say that the member for Sunderland West and Washington, Sharon Hodgson, has not spoken about the need for investment in the metro, her being the best-known advocate of the Washington Metro Extension. So I think it is, it was perhaps unintended for the member opposite to suggest that our members of parliament have not spoken on this issue. But I'm glad that we agree on both sides of the chamber. This is incredibly important. There are things like the Washington Metro Extension, that the Brighton-Ashington Line, that could be invested in now, that would make enormous difference to our local economy. And I strongly commend this motion.
Councillor McCarthy, you reserve the right to speak? Oh, sorry. Councillor Inceley, it's a long day. Sorry. You're fine? Yeah. Okay. Councillor Stone?
Thank you, Lord Mayor. I'm pleased to see there is a broad amount of consensus across the chamber tonight in recognition of the importance of transport connectivity and to improve economic performance. And I think there's increasing political support for ensuring the north-east gets the fair living of funding that we need to secure the transport improvements our region needs. Funding for the north-east has for a long time been well adrift at a funding level seen in London, and this does make it ever more difficult to narrow the north-south economic divide. There are some good reasons why London does get funding. It has a much greater population, a much greater population density, and it makes sense for London to have a public transport system that reflects that, with Crossrail One and Two being manifestations of that. The north-east did get relatively little transport investment under the previous Labour government, which did fairly little to electrify railway or build new lines. It did spend £800 million on improving King Scott Underground station. You could say that had some tangential benefit for the north-east, but it's probably fairly slight. The logic of investing in London infrastructure is sound, but the logic of investing in the north-east regional infrastructure is as well. George Osborne is not often praised in this chamber, but I do feel he did go further than many recent politicians in championing the case for modernisation of the North transport network. And his Northern Pound Out initiative did make some important commitments to improving intercity connections in the North with electrification of the Trans-Pennine Route. However, the promises of the past government are in danger of going unfulfilled by the current one. The DFT is no longer seeking to prioritise the electrification of the Leeds-Manchester routes. Work to improve the 866/869 east-west roads seems a long way off too. And until this morning, there was no sign of progress on the A1 improvements in Northumberland. But perhaps our motion has shamed the government into responding a bit quicker. The Transport Secretary has come under fire for failing to deliver by regional leaders, including the leader of council. But I think he did make a telling point when he suggested that the north-east needs to seize its own destiny in ensuring that major transport schemes are progressed. The challenge for this region's leadership is to show it can set its own priorities for major transport investments and get on with delivering them. The regional leadership's default position is to blame the government and underfunding for everything. It may have good reason for doing so, but it also needs to demonstrate that it's doing its own bit to make sure that it makes things happen effectively. Often, it seems that the region isn't always able to agree amongst itself in terms of what it deems to be a priority for transport investments. And without a devolution deal in place and a productive relationship with Whitehall, the north-east risks lagging even further behind as regions like the West Midlands get on with the job of securing funding for extensions to their own metro projects. Not only does the north-east not have a devolution deal yet, it seems not to recognise the urgent need to conclude a deal with government on the reinvigoration of metro. The longer it takes to secure this deal, the greater the risk of service failures as the existing metro units are taken out of service. And that could happen as soon as 2020, I understand. Yet NECA seemed to be set on a confrontational stance with the government, and it did pull out of meeting with the DFT on this at the end of July. Councillor Forbes calls this reference, that's in the motion, a misphrasing. I call that a matter of record. We need to see government provide proper funding for transport investment in the north-east, but we do see NECA step up its game on this as well. If the region can't deliver agreed deliverable priorities for transport investments, we risk losing out within the new Transport for North structure to schemes in Yorkshire and Greater Manchester, and we'll be behind other regions where mayors are getting the green light for their schemes, not raising the red flag like this region does. Thank you, Lord Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Stone. Councillor Haddad, you have the right to reply.
Thank you, Lord Mayor. Just a few comments. I recently raised this issue with Vince Cable, as have several other Lib Dem groups across the north of England. And he has agreed to support our concerns because he can see the discrimination here. So what I would like to happen is that the Labour group, you're going to a conference, aren't you, in the autumn? That you will be raising this issue as much as you can through your politicians, et cetera. And have a word with Sadiq Khan and ask him to come up and travel on the metro here and see what it's like. And also that you will ensure that we don't get a metro upgrade by being given somebody else's second-hand old carriages. Because I've seen that suggested, that we could have somebody's carriages that they don't want in the south of England. Well, rubbish to that, sorry. Anyway, thank you for your friendly amendment, councillor Forbes. And it's not quite what we wanted, but we'll accept it on the grounds of friendship, okay?
So we all agree? Do we all agree the amendment?
Yes.
And that then becomes a substantive motion, and do we all agree that?
Yes.
Okay, we'll just deal with the last couple of items. I will ask the mover of each item if they want to defer the matter to the next meeting or deal with it now without a vote. Deal with it now without a vote? Yeah? With a vote, is that supposed to be? We're all getting tired tonight, I think. Okay, it's fine. So the first one is 19, Notice of Motion, Job Centre closures. Councillor McCarthy?
Lord Mayor, I'd like it dealt with tonight, if I may, rather than defer it and remove it.
Oh, thank you. Is it seconded? Yeah. Are we in favour? Can we vote? Agreed? Agreed, that's fine, thank you. The next one is Notice of Motion, Exhibition and Conference Centre, Gateshead Keys. Councillor Falconer, do you wish?
Deal with it tonight and accept the amendment, Lord Mayor.
Okay, so we're all happy with the amendment being the substantive motion? Yeah? Oh, sorry, thank you. Thank you. That's great. I think that's the end of the meeting. Thank you very much. Can I just wish everybody who was running on Sunday success? And can I also mention that the lady mayoress is actually running for the Lord Mayor's charities? And as the bucket's outside, if you want to add a bit more, she'd be grateful. She's already raised a few, a little bit, but I didn't want to send an email around because I know everybody's after your sponsor. But if you've got a bit spare cash, please put it in the bucket. Thank you very much and good night.